Welcome to the May 2nd meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. I do want to recognize before Mr. Wade does our prayer today, today is the National Day of Prayer. Established many, many years ago, it's been recognized by every single president, going all the way back to Truman, to be able to say that today is a day that we all can pray for our country. So with that, Councilman Wade.
Let us pray. Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for a National Prayer Day. Most of all, we just thank you for our country. We thank you for our city of Murfreesboro. Lord, we ask you to just protect our firefighters, our service providers, all that they do for our city. Lord, just give us the wisdom to make right decisions for the best of our city, in Jesus' Christ's name. Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We've got an important ceremonial item today. We have our city schools director, Dr. Gilbert, who's going to present to us the invention, convention winners, and teacher recognitions.
Well, actually, that was the last time I was here, so I'm going to change. But I do have two special people that I want to introduce, and I thought that they had been changed, so I apologize for that. But we do have Don Barch with us, and we have Sarah Chumney. So Sarah, I'd like to introduce you first, and Don, if you'd go ahead and come up, please. Each year, teachers recommend a teacher for Teacher of the Year in the schools, and then that person moves on to the district level, and they move on to the regional level. So Sarah Chumney is an English as a Second Language teacher at Casey Lane, and she has been selected for the Mid Cumberland Teacher of the Year. That represents 13 to 15 districts, and so we're very pleased that she has been selected, and she will move on now to the three grand division level, and then move on to the State Teacher of the Year. So this is Sarah Chumney. And Don Barch is principal at Overall Creek. It was a STEM designated school, I guess, last year. It was one of the first 19 in the state, and that 19 included elementary and middle and high schools. This year, he has been selected as the state, to receive the State STEM Leadership Award by the Tennessee STEM Collaborative, and so we're extremely proud of that. He is the one person in the state who has been chosen for leadership, and this can be at the school level, or district level, or regional level, and he was selected as that person. So, Don, I'm going to let you ask them to come to see your school, and thank you very much for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you. If you have an opportunity on May 17th, here in a couple of weeks, is when we have what we call a steam walk, and a couple of you folks have been there, or been a part of that, from 8:00 to 11:00, or actually, could come any time you want during that day, and we'll take care of it. But 8:00 to 11:00 on May 17th is when we do a steam walk, and you will see some really intense projects that we're very excited about that have been going on for the last several weeks. Fourth grade, fifth grade are trying to figure out how to launch boats that are going to float me in the creek, and so there's ramps and boats, and I'm not a small guy, so they got to come up with a serious boat. So if you have a chance, you'll see a lot of engineering, and it'd be great for you to see what's going on in Murfreesboro City Schools. Thank you.
While you're up there, I've got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I know the, you've got a beautiful campus, and I've visited your school a couple of times. It's always very well managed and a beautiful school itself. How has the new bridge impacted your campus? Are you seeing more people walking to school, or pedestrian traffic coming from the neighborhood?
We're getting more and more, almost every week. It kind of compounds weekly. We have three bike riders, so they park right outside my office, so that's picking up a little bit. You know, parents are trying to decide if they're going to turn loose to those people riding their bikes, but yes, yes, sir, we have. It's changed a lot with the traffic pattern.
Right.
Especially on 96 and veterans, that's been a significant change.
Well, I know it was one of the efforts we continuously pushed to try and improve traffic flow, because it's one of the things we hear the most complaints about. And rode through there the other day and noticed how many people were actually using the bridge, which I know that's people that would have normally been out on Highway 96 and out on Veterans Parkway. And so it's encouraging to see those people using that route, and I think it'll only increase as far as once they get used to thinking that way. It'll be an increased route of traffic, but it's an effort to continue to improve traffic flow in Murfreesboro, and I'm glad it's an asset to the school as well.
It's great. It made Moreland back to a little country road again, so it really helped out, because that was an interstate for a little while. So anyway, thank you, guys, and appreciate Overall Creek, and I'm only as good as my staff, so getting this award is really for Overall Creek and Murfreesboro City Schools. It was easy for me to do because of who I got, so thank you.
Great. We have our Rutherford County historian slash county comedian, who is going to give us our history lesson for the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, last time I was here, you were absent, and you missed the chance to take part in our history quiz at the time. But I wanted to report that the Vice Mayor and Councilman Shacklet did extremely well. The rest of them...
We came up a little short.
Well, we saved one question.
Oh, no.
Yes, one question. This will be multiple choice, give you a little better chance. We're familiar with the term, the name Cannonsburg. In what year did the name Cannonsburg actually attach to a particular piece of property in Tennessee? I'm going to give you your choices. All we need is the year. 1811? He's cheating.
He wasn't. He was telling...
1813? 1817? 1912? Or none of the above?
I'm going to say eight, and that's my final answer.
What'd you say?
1811.
No.
Sorry.
I tried to set it up for you. The answer is none of the above. Am I right, Councilman Shacklet?
That's correct.
That's correct. In October 1811, so there is a connection. In October 1811, a freshman state senator, young fellow, introduced a private act in the state legislature, which specified that seven wealthy landowners in Rutherford County were being appointed to select a site for a new town, which would be the new county seat. After all the wherefores and what-asses of the typical private act, down near the end, he added a little paragraph that said, "And when it is established, it's going to be called Cannonsburg." About three weeks later, he submitted a second private act, which repealed the entire first one, and substituted a second bill, which was absolutely the same, word for word, except for one word. The name Cannonsburg had been changed to Murfreesboro, that's spelled with a UGH, Murfreesboro. Now, you know, we'll never know what happened in those two or three weeks, but I can speculate. I can see a senior member of the state senate going up to Newton Cannon and saying, "Boy, we don't pass bills putting our own name on things." Or perhaps, he was contacted by the descendants of the family of Colonel Hardy Murfree, who suggested that since they owned substantial property throughout his district, maybe he'd like to consider putting the name Murfree on it. He did. And thereafter, the name Cannonsburg disappeared completely until 1976, the year of the American bicentennial, when our mayor at the time...
Westbrooke.
...decided to pick up the name, having absolutely no idea what the history of the name was, but someone had suggested that somewhere back in our history, there was a Cannonsburg. So what you need to remember, if you hear someone make reference to the town of Cannonsburg, and named in honor of Newton Cannon, it never got to exist, and the legislature wasn't trying to honor Newton Cannon, and Newton Cannon was trying to get his name on something at the time. As you know, 25 years later, he got elected governor, and he got a whole county next door, Cannon County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right. We'll now move into the consent agenda. No comments or corrections, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Upstain. All right, we'll move to new business, Resolution 19R06, Acceptance of T.DOT's Proposal to Construct Two Road Improvement Projects, and this is coming from Mr. Kerr.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. The projects will provide improvements of Memorial Boulevard from Dejarnet Lane to south of Fairfax Drive, and O'Fort Parkway from east of Camden Court to east of Gresham Lane. The projects will include pedestrian features, including sidewalk elements. These particular fall under the Transportation Alternative Program, excuse me, Alternative Projects, or TAP program, which is the same program that's utilized for the Mercury Boulevard Sidewalk Projects Phases One and Two. Staff recommends approval of this resolution, and accepting the T.DOT proposal to improve portions of State Route 10 and State Route 96. Project costs are funded with federal and state dollars. Upon completion and the warranty period, the city will assume maintenance cost incorporated into its maintenance budget. I'm vital for any questions you may have.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. All right, we'll now move into Land Use Matters. Ordinance 19OZ06, Rezoning Approximately 1.4 Acres Along Mercury Boulevard. Mr. Blomley.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, and members of council. Our first land use matter tonight is a rezoning request for property that's located along the south side of Mercury Boulevard. It's in the block of Mercury that is in between South Rutherford Boulevard and Dill Lane. Excuse me, it's kind of a unique situation where the current zoning of the property, which is PCD, has really little or no utility on this property. The, if you'll follow me on this, this is the area that was originally zoned back about 10 or 12 years ago for the Tractor Supply PCD. As you can see, Tractor Supply did not need nearly in that area, and ended up developing on that smaller box that I just drew. Several years ago, this area was rezoned to RM16 for the development of townhomes, and cleaning up that PCD, and now we have the area that's colored in orange that looks like Mississippi there along the south side of Mercury Boulevard. It is zoned specifically for Tractor Supply, and Tractor Supply, obviously built next door on a smaller footprint. Think that when the property was initially requested for zoning, the applicants overestimated the amount of land that they would need, so the resulting excess PCD-zoned land really has no, serves no purpose, as we don't anticipate a Tractor Supply building right next to a Tractor Supply. The 2035 Land Use Plan recommends that the property develop as general commercial. The applicant has requested a CH zoning classification, and that CH zoning classification is compatible with the land that is directly to the east of the subject property along South Rutherford Boulevard, that is already zoned CH. This request is actually for portions of two parcels. The balance of the parcels that are included in this request are already zoned CH, so this request would be consistent with the zoning for the rest of these parcels. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on March 6th, and unanimously recommended approval by a vote of seven to nothing. The city council will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and Mr. John Mifflin, who is the owner's representative, is available if you have any questions for him.
All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this matter. If you're wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll state your name and address, if you'll keep all your questions directed towards the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. If you're representing yourself as an individual, you'll have three minutes, and then if you're representing a neighborhood or a group, you'll have five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider for passage, Ordinance 19OZ06, Rezoning Approximately 1.4 Acres Along Mercury Boulevard.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move to Ordinance 19OZ09, Rezoning Approximately 90.56 Acres Along New Salem Highway and Clear Ridge Drive. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our second public hearing tonight is a rezoning request located southeast of New Salem Highway, and also east of Clear Ridge Drive. The subject property actually has several zoning classifications on it. This is part of the Rucker-Donnell property, and back when this property was annexed, I believe it was in 2013, there weren't any development plans for the property, so there were, there was a plan for the zoning for any future development. Now that there is a proposed development plan, we are actually looking to fine tune the zoning that's on the property right now. You'll see that up along New Salem Highway, there is commercial highway zoning, a strip of commercial highway zoning. Behind the commercial highway is OG and RM16, and further to the south behind the OG and RM16 is RS15 zoning. As you know, OG is a little bit of a zoning district that we don't see very much use out of these days, so there's a big chunk of OG zoning right there that is not likely to be developed. Office uses, when they're clustered together, really tend to locate in areas with larger potential for office development. Otherwise, many offices locate in retail commercial centers in harmony with other retail uses. So the large swath of OG zoning really, in today's market, serves very little utility. So the applicant is requesting to zone about 90.56 acres from four existing zoning classifications, CH, OG, RM16, and RS15 to RS6. He has a proposed single-family subdivision that would have a townhome component as well, but the RS6 zoning would allow single-family residential lots of a minimum of 6,000 square feet in size, and he wishes to move forward with development of that subdivision, but of course, the zoning request is key in moving forward with that development. The 2035 Land Use Plan does show the property as being general commercial along the front. There still will be a significant amount of commercial zoning, commercial highway zoning along the front edge along New Salem Highway, so it's honoring that intent, that portion of the plan. However, the RS6 zone is, cuts into a little bit of what's recommended for the general commercial designation. The applicant will explain momentarily during a PowerPoint presentation how he feels that this deviation from the 2035 Land Use Plan is appropriate. We did conduct a neighborhood meeting on this matter. It was well attended, and then at the, at the Planning Commission meeting, there was one speaker, he's an adjacent neighbor to the east. One of his main concerns was a property line being shown incorrectly. Mr. Taylor with SEC, who will get up in just a moment, researched that property line and determined that the gentleman was correct, so we have actually modified the maps since Planning Commission. Before the map showed the requested property squared off like that, as you can see, we've amended that to show the actual correct boundary lines based on the deeds that Mr. Taylor researched. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on March 6th, and unanimously recommended approval by a vote of seven to nothing. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, and as I mentioned, Mr. Taylor would like to make a brief PowerPoint presentation.
Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Matt Taylor of SEC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Tim McClure, the applicant on the project, as well as Mr. John Harney, who represents the current landowner of the Rucker-Donnell Foundation. We do have a brief PowerPoint presentation to present the Salem Springs Landing Development. It is about 90 acres of open, mostly open cropland. There are a few small existing ponds and wetlands surrounded by trees that you can see in the aerial. As Mr. Blomley said, the existing zoning is made up of a mixture of CH, OG, RM16, and And then, the 2035 plan appears to have basically followed the existing zoning lines, and we feel like that since the original zoning plan was approved about six years ago, that really, the overall retail environment has changed. It's become very evident that big boxes and large commercial developments are fewer and further between, and the ones that do come will gravitate toward more A locations, more visible locations, such as intersection of Veterans Parkway and Highway 99, which this plan still leaves intact. So we feel like this plan provides for a better residential development and a more realistic view of the current market. Proposed zoning plan, the red line outlines, the areas that we're changing, as Mr. Blomley said, to RS6. We feel like the RS6 guidelines and requirements inside the zoning ordinance, as well as the design guidelines, are created, for instance, is just like this, which will provide for assurance of quality projects. Some of those guidelines are requirements to have 20% open space, a certain amount of active areas, as well as 75% masonry on your architecture. Here's a concept plan. This plan may change a little bit as we go through the master plan and construction document phase, but it has approximately 350 single-family homes and about 120 townhouses. It does preserve 20 acres of open space, and it meets the design guidelines. It has several pocket parks and several detention ponds spread throughout the community. Some examples of the type homes we anticipate. Access plan, our main access point will come off of Highway 99. That's where sewer, water, other utilities would come from. At this location, we'll also construct turn lanes on Highway 99, and at some future point that may see a signal, if it's warranted, that may come when other parts of the development come, but we have set that up on the master planning and spacing-wise to leave that ability. In addition, we'll have a secondary access point back to Clear Ridge, which would give us another access point back to Highway 99. And then we've planned for multiple stubs into either remaining property of the foundation or neighboring properties, which would give us access either back to Highway 99, back to Thompson Road, back to Armstrong, or back to Veterans Parkway in the future. As Mr. Blomley said, we did hold a neighborhood meeting back in early February. It was fairly well attended. I think we had about 25 households represented. We essentially heard two major concerns at that meeting, which was drainage and traffic. Drainage, we will address with construction plans. We understand that there is some water that goes from our side into Clear Ridge today. We have a fairly large detention pond plan there to manage that stormwater, and then there are some existing drainage issues or opportunities out along Highway 99 in the front of Clear Ridge. We will study those, and we'll help those where we can, but we certainly will not be able to make them any worse according to your regulations. Traffic, Highway 99 is a regional issue, but we are taking care of our impact through the turn lanes, and then we'll also dedicate any right of way along 99 for future improvements that are required. So myself, or other members of the team that are here, will be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? All right, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this zoning request, please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. If you, my name is first of all Rick Womack. I own the property adjacent to two sides of the property here that is being described for the rezoning. If you would oblige me, I'd like to approach and offer some pictures for seven council members.
Give us your address.
Pardon me?
Your address.
6015 Highway 99. Thank you. May I approach?
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
Just, I think seven copies of the council, I just yelled, "Take one and pass it around."
My issue, and let me also say, Mr. Mayor, I'm representing a couple of families in the Clear Ridge subdivision as well, they could not be here tonight. Our issue is not so much the rezoning and what it's being used for, as it is how it's going to be, oops, that's the point. How it's going to be developed, and how the drainage and the water is... going to be, oops, that's the point. How it's going to be developed and how the drainage and the water is going to be slated to move about the property. That's really what it boils down to. So, first of all, I came before this body several years ago when you made the decision to go ahead and annex the property of the Rutherford-Donnell Foundation. And I pointed out at that time, the big, what they call now a wetland, if you look at the pictures that I've got there, right off of Highway 99 to the right there, you'll see a very dark area with trees. That's, that's the so-called wetland. A little bit of history on that wetland. I don't know who called it or who determined it to be a wetland, but it never was a wetland. When Mr. Donnell was alive, he gave permission to Mr. Danny Dill to go in there and use the property for resource extraction. Mr. Dill acquired a permit from Rutherford County and dug a bunch of dirt out and left all the holes that you see now filled up with water, which completely screwed up or messed up the entire drainage area of that, of my property, as well as the subdivision. Destroyed a lot of the trees along my property line and onto my property. But the county did nothing about it. I complained to them multiple times. Again, I brought it to your attention so that you would know. And I was told by this body that if the land was ever developed, this would be addressed. And that's why I'm here tonight. If you look at that, I've kind of got it circled there. You'll see my house, that my property is 25 acres adjacent to the rezoned area. You'll see Clear Ridge subdivision to the right. This picture that you're looking at, this is a fairly recent aerial photograph after quite a bit of the rains we had, about two weeks after all the rains we had this past winter and early spring. You'll notice my driveway is pretty much underwater. The Clear Ridge subdivision in one area to the south, a couple of homes yards are completely And then in the front there, where the other arrow drawn from the word flooded is where the Dollar General is, and that property there is also flooded because there's no ability for the water to drain from that subdivision across my property. And anywhere but that dugout, what's called a wetland, it's not. It's resource extraction that was never completed. It was supposed to be turned into a huge lake for wildlife and waterfowl. That never happened. So, now what we have is you'll go to the second picture. That picture there is after I've driven through about three feet of water on my dri, or two feet of water on my driveway. That's looking to the subdivision that is adjacent to my property. There's supposed to be a culvert there. It's completely underwater. That home who owns all that property with a tree is in the middle of it. It's all underwater. And all of my property, except for my house in the back, is underwater, including my driveway. If you go to the next page, you'll see that my driveway curves around in an S fashion. You can't even see the driveway. It's completely underwater. The next picture is a picture of the resource extraction pond. Now, that is a picture of the tree line. On the other side of that tree line is where the resource extraction occurred. On this side of the tree line, that's my property. It's a lake because there's nowhere for that water to go. If you go to the next page, you'll see a picture of the Dollar General. That's out front, just off of Highway 99. That didn't used to be there until about seven or eight years ago. And whoever developed it put in what they called a detention pond. And if you'll see the arrow there, right where the arrow is, is a detention pond. It's all of about 50 feet long and 25 feet wide and three feet deep. It doesn't hold the water, not nearly big enough. Problem two is that the water cannot fully drain under the highway because that's been blocked off by the Dollar General. And so, all the water that's coming in from the subdivision, and the last page, of course, is a picture of more of the front, that's my property that you see there. It's all underwater. And it's just about 20 feet from my driveway at that point, and that's the front part of my driveway. My complaint here today and my concern and my request from all of you is that there needs to be a plan to do something with this area of resource extraction. SEC is the same company that's doing this subdivision, did the Clear Ridge subdivision. You can see how well their drainage plan worked out there. They had nowhere to drain the water. Now, they're going to dig a couple detention ponds, and they think that's going to hold the water. Well, you see how well the water's being held back by the Dollar General's detention The other problem we're having too is mosquitoes. They're rampant down there. Water stands there for months before it all drains out, and that's with no rain. Mosquitoes, even after the water's drained off of my property, that resource extraction area still holds water, and the mosquitoes are just unbelievable. And you're talking about putting a subdivision in all that land over, almost 100 acres, with more big holes in the ground that are going to hold water and going to hold more mosquitoes. There's nowhere in this area where they're talking about draining and building the subdivision for the water to go. It's going to sit there and collect. It's going to be year-round. When I first moved in this property almost 30 years ago, we didn't have any water problems. Then Danny Dill built, or started digging, and then we had this so-called wetland now, big hole in the ground. It's not working. And now you're talking about bringing in more people, more buildings, more drainage. We don't know which way the water's going to drain. I have a funny feeling it's going to be draining right into that area called a wetland. It can't hold anymore. It's coming over on my property and into the subdivision, is backing up into the subdivision. And the next thing that's going to happen, there's going to be homes that are going to be flooded in that subdivision. My home in the back is on high enough ground. Access point, this is another issue, especially for the folks in the subdivision.
Mr. Wommack?
Yes, sir.
It's five minutes representing a group, and we're, I'm at nine, so if you will wrap it up.
I'll wrap it up real quick, yes, sir. Just the last point. The access point they're talking about is going to be joining the road through that subdivision. Who's going to, who's going to reinforce that road? That road's all torn up now. It's not in that good a shape. And now you're talking about tripling or quadrupling the traffic through that subdivision to get to this new subdivision. That's their second access point. Do you see where I'm talking about on that?
Yeah.
So, they have no plans for widening that road, fixing that road. They're just going to join to that road, and guess what? Now, you've, you've got four to five times as much traffic going through there. So, I would encourage this council to take a close look at fixing that current hole in the ground called a wetland where the resource extraction was. Dig it deeper, clean it out, and then join it to the new detention pond that they're talking about building. Because the drainage there is not going to work the way they've got it planned. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wommack. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Blomley, I don't know if, Mr. Taylor, but we've got several pictures of, and information from Mr. Wommack on drainage issues. Can you give us some information on that?
I know Mr. Taylor has studied the drainage in this area, and so I would defer those questions to him, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do not see the pictures or have not, but I can tell you that generally the property wants to flow toward Highway 99. It's not going to go there without going through those wetlands like they are today. As far as who calls those wetlands, those are by professionals, both private, public at TDEC, as well as public through the Corps of Engineers. And those regulations have changed drastically over the last three to four years. So, there is not much opportunity to manipulate or change those, if you will. But we certainly always study those areas and try to make those better where we can for the residents. And where we can, we like to divert water, divert areas away from problem areas when we can.
Mr. Taylor, it looks like one of the challenges with this, as far as the, the water, would be the, sort of the narrowness of the, of the property getting out to 99. I mean, is there, are you able to try to work with neighboring properties to have more of a, you know, a comprehensive?
So, we...
Solution?
We always look at the entire system when we do those. So, we won't take the water out to 99 on our, on our leg out. That'll be purely an access point. We will discharge some water back toward the north where there's a culvert on the remaining property of the Rucker-Donnell Foundation. And then some will go toward the, kind of the west side where there's a culvert up near the Dollar General that Mr. Wommack mentioned. So, some, that's where the water goes today. It may not get there quickly, but that's where it goes today, and that's where we'll continue to send some that way.
We have stormwater out there? I mean, is it?
What's that? Sorry.
We have sewer and stormwater out through there?
You have sewer out there, which was run out for the Rockville High, and it's on the north side of 99, on some other of the foundation's property. So, we've actually submitted sewer extension plans to run from there to cross under 99 to get to this side. Stormwater, you would start to take over as you annex. Most of the infrastructure out here is mainly made up of culverts underneath Highway 99 that TDOT installed with their projects. And they, they would again look at that whenever they do any widening projects in this general area as well, to see if they make any modifications.
One more question. Is Clear Ridge, is that a county or?
It's a county subdivision, and it's got a stub there that was done several years ago, and we're connecting to that. I will say, we talked about this at our neighborhood meeting. We do believe that our intersection will be signalized at some point, and we think that signal will likely come before a signal at Clear Ridge. So, we think it'll be a good back way out for those residents whenever they want to access a signal.
So, if we know that there's water going to Dollar General now, and that it's, is that something, when this comes to site plan approval, if it's passed, that we can address with the county on?
We would, we would evaluate that whole system and basically look at a precondition and see exactly how it's operating today and make sure it either operates the same or better at the construction plan level. So, if we have the opportunity, we like to improve it. Sometimes the opportunity just doesn't exist.
Is the wetlands in the, on the Donnell property?
It is. We, we stopped mapping at the Rucker-Donnell property, so it's very possible it extends to other properties, but we, we just don't go onto those other properties. We purely look at our site.
The, the dark green area within what is being shown to us in the zoning request is, is that the wetlands area too, where it goes into your OG there, where it says OG?
Are you talking on kind of the north side, Mr.?
Right, right, right.
So, some of that is going to, there is a small portion, about half an acre of wetland there. There's an existing pond there as well. I think it was a more natural feature, if I understand the history of that feature. It's more natural, whereas the portion of the property that Mr. Wommack was mentioning was man-made, self, or man-created.
Where is that at? The, the?
The man-created piece?
Yeah, the extraction.
So, if you look at our concept plan, and it is, see what? Right in there. Whereas this feature right here was more man-made in nature. So, this one is man-made or natural. This one's man-made down in the, on the left.
So, what kind of restrictions are on that man-made? Is that, is that?
The state and corps classifies that today as a natural feature, as a wetland. And so, you have to, any modification of that, you have to go through the same permitting process as we do for the natural feature on the other side. And that may seem odd and frustrating, and I share in that same frustration every day.
Generally, when you would dig out ground like that?
Mm-hmm.
Would that create more flooding? It seems like that would not create more flooding. It seems like...
So, I, I do not know whether the gentleman that did that, whether he dug it out and bermed something up beside of it to make the ground elevation higher. That I don't know, Mr. Lance. I would think the same way you were thinking. If you're digging it out, you're really creating a spot for it to, to go. But if he did place it to the side, maybe create a berming situation, he could have done something there. I, I just don't know 100% what he, how he modified that original condition.
I mean, when we discuss developments like this, we generally look at it as they can't release any more water off onto adjoining property than what they currently release today. And you've got a pretty large detention pond next to that wetland area that was showing on the left there. Is there any potential that with the depth of that detention pond, that you could potentially remove some of the water that's going over onto that property by virtue of having a, a deeper detention pond?
So, it could be that we hold it back longer. But, you know, again, I think that existing system probably lets that water sit in there for a long time anyway. We will definitely have it as deep as necessary, but if we can add a little bit of area or a little bit of depth and help the situation, we'll certainly do that. And some of that may be that we divert some of that water back to that natural feature on the north side. And then that water will continue north and cross under Highway 99 there. We'll have to evaluate that pipe. We can't, obviously, we don't want to create a new situation on that side of the project.
Do we know what capacity that the line that goes under Highway 99 is currently carrying? I mean, is it at max capacity, or do we, do we know the answer to that question?
We will at a construction plan stage. We would study both of those pipes.
So, Mr. Taylor, are you willing to work with the applicant to?
Absolutely. He can come sit down with me. I'll walk through my drainage plan. It would obviously go through the scrutiny of city staff when we submit, and we do our own in-house review as well. So, we're happy to do, and we're happy to sit down individually. We've got no problem with that.
All right. Thank you.
Hearing that, I feel better because the, the tough thing in a situation like this is where you've got a system in the county that's not functioning properly already. And a lot of times with the city development, because we've got the stormwater policies in place to be able to handle that on-site, I, I think it would be good, going through this process, that we see how, it's not your responsibility to fix what's broken there already, but if there's a way that by what you're doing, and especially with the county, maybe finding a way that we can improve those, improve that drainage system. This reminds me a lot of Shores Road, when we started talking about Shores Road many years ago, and they had all those issues. And then Weston Park was developed and several developments along Shores Road, and they were able to fix some of that by the, the development of that.
Yes, sir. And I think we've done that in a couple other, a couple of other opportunities, and so we would, we would look at this opportunity the same way.
What will ultimately end up happening? I pulled up on, on Google Earth, what will ultimately end up happening with what looks like the, there's the recovery, resource recovery area that's right there north of Mr. Wommack's property, but then more northeast? What is, what is happening with the big, looks like? what is happening with the big, looks like a lake that's there?
It's gonna, it, it will wind up staying. It would, it's gonna be considered a wetland there as well, and so that's gonna wind up remaining. At one time, when regulations were a little different, we had hoped to be able to go in there and dress that up a little bit, make it more of a feature around there. But today, those are much more protected. That may still be a possibility, but we, we are not really banking on that. So, that being a natural feature and classified as wetlands, it's gonna have to largely stay in its natural state.
So, we don't want to make the situation worse, but we also are kind of handcuffed in the sense that we can't drain the wetland either.
That's right.
So-
And the state looks at those things. They look if you start to divert water away from those features. They look to see if you start to try to drain those features, because all of that changes. Mr. Womack's right. That feature probably wasn't a wetland when it started out, but somebody changed the hydrology, somebody changed the hydraulics of how that was working, and so it changed the characteristics of that land. We are seeing the state classify more and more property as what they call emerging wetlands, and so they're not fully classified as wetlands, but they're protecting those just the same today. And that's a fairly recent activity that we've seen come about.
How deep is that wetlands?
The man-made, I, I would say that ranges anywhere from, you know, a couple of feet to 10 feet, you know, depending on how deep he dug, and it could be deeper. Those could just be the areas that don't drain out.
Is that a safety issue with the residential building being next to it?
Well, we've, we've tried to create enough buffer there, but I'm not gonna say I couldn't, that you can't keep a nosy, curious little boy out of there. So, the mamas and the daddies that join that will have to have a watchful eye. I would've been there if I was an eight or nine-year-old boy.
But that's no different than a wetland that we've got at Oakland Park or anything like that.
That's right.
I mean, you know, there's responsibility of parents involved there as far as making sure that you're, you know where your children are, so.
Mr. Taylor, one thing I'd like to just mention on this is, you know, we've gonna, we're gonna need to have two, we'll have two readings on this, is that right? We'll have, we'll have first reading tonight, potentially, and then another reading. I think it'd be a good idea if, Mr. Blomley, if you will coordinate a meeting to meet with Mr. Womack before our, before we have a second reading. That way, we can make sure that we've kind of taken a couple of extra steps. I mean, look, I, honestly, man, when we start talking about water, you know, it's, you know, there's part of me that kind of says, when you have these 100 or 500-year events, whether we should make every judgment on that or whether we should. I mean, it's, it's kind of a hard thing. What I do know is I don't know about hydrology. I don't know about how to flow water off, and so we have to trust staff and the engineers to do the best job that they can. But I think this might be a particular, in this particular situation, it'd be a good idea to try to do a little bit of extra work with the neighbors, see what we can do to, to maybe come up with a, I mean, there's, to me, it seems like there's a chance for a win-win here, you know? I mean, where, where we might be able to make, you know, obviously not, just not make it worse, but maybe make it better in that area if, if, if the parties can work together. So, if we could try to have that meeting before the second reading, I'd be glad to trust staff that that's gonna get done to the best of our capabilities on first reading. The second reading, I'd love to know that you guys have spoken with him, okay?
Works for me.
All right. I want to say thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Seeing none, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll now move into Plan of Services and Annexation for approximately 123 acres and zoning for approximately 231.3 acres along South Rutherford Boulevard and Lee Lane Planning. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our next item is the annexation of property that is located along both South Rutherford Boulevard and Lee Lane. The bulk of the annexation is located along Lee Lane on both the north and south sides. It's the area colored in purple on the map before you. The, it includes right-of-way of Lee Lane and a 10-foot segment of right-of-way along South Rutherford Boulevard. We have obtained consent from the County Road Board to move forward with the annexation of those right-of-way. There's a companion zoning request that's on the agenda next, but this, this item is just for the annexation and the Plan of Services. We'll have a separate public hearing on the zoning, which I will make a separate presentation on. The annexation is for 123 acres total. The property is largely undeveloped. There are some agricultural outbuildings, but the property, since it is undeveloped, would be relatively easy to affect its annexation. The agricultural outbuildings, since they are agricultural in nature and they're not, they're not residences, Fire Department sees no issue with allowing those to, to, to be annexed into the city without providing the fire protection that would be normally required for single-family residences that we annexed. So, no additional fire protection would need to be required for the existing structures upon annexation. Of course, once, once development occurs, then, then proper fire protection would need to be provided for any future development. But you do have the annex, or the Plan of Services in your agenda materials. As I mentioned, it would be a relatively easy annexation to affect. I'll be happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned, this first public hearing is purely for the annexation and Plan of Services. We will address the zoning in the next public hearing.
Mr. Blomley, I just want to go ahead and make note, I'll need to abstain from this, this matter altogether due to one of the applicants being my employer.
Okay, so, we'll go through three different public hearings. We'll do a public hearing, or excuse me, two different public hearings, but the first hearing is on the Plan of Services and the Annexation. So, it's just basically that we can annex it, annex it, and we can provide services to it. After we go through that public hearing, we'll go into the rezoning request. If the rezoning request, if the annexation, the Plan of Services pass, but the annexation, or the zoning request fails, then the annexation and plan of requests goes away. So, I just wanted to explain that before we go through, 'cause I think what most people want to talk about is the zoning request. So, we'll open our public hearing on the Plan of Services and Annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. We'll need to consider, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Sure.
My name is Nettie Monday. I live at 6833 Lofton Road in Las Cassas. Lifelong resident of Murfreesboro, until I moved to Las Cassas 32 years ago. I want to tell you that I'm a part-owner of one of the properties in question here. And some people might say, well, you have a vested interest. Sure do. But I also think this is a good project for the county, for the city. A little bit of the history of the 85-acre farm that my cousin and his wife and my brother and sister own. My uncle and my dad bought it in 1942, so it's been in the family a long time. I lived on that farm till I was seven years old. For many years, my cousin has been farming that. He's getting on up in years. No longer can manage that, and we're not farmers, so we were tickled to hear about the possibility of this old Hickory project, because we think it has a good reputation. I've researched it a bit, both for their, the quality of their products. They, from what I understand, they use Mennonite or Amish workmen to build these buildings. The owner has a reputation for doing good projects, trying to keep them looking well, fitting into the neighborhood, being as unobnoxious as possible to the surrounding community. It is internationally known. I understand there's like 600 plants nationwide, and that they also sell into Canada. They have access now to a spur line, so that they can both get their materials by rail and ship their products across the country. That would lessen the semi-traffic, one would think. There doesn't sound like there's gonna be air, ground, or water pollution involved in this process. A clean industry. And like I said, the use of a rail spur would get a lot of truck traffic, for instance, what FedEx would've brought with it off the road. And Lord knows, we need all the help in that area that we can get. It'll also afford a level of security to the neighbors that they do not have currently. I'm sure this, this project will offer security at the site. I know my cousin-
I hate to interrupt you, but you're, you're right at your three-minute limit.
At my what?
Three-minute limit.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I wanted to say, Lee Lane will only be a used, used for emergency vehicles. It will not be a thoroughfare. It'll bring jobs, tax revenue for schools and infrastructure improvements. Something's coming to this property, and this may be the best possible option. You could get a multi-building, high-rise apartment complex, sprawling housing development, and you know we need some more of those. Not nearly as desirable, I wouldn't think, as this project.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, anyone wishing to speak? This is for the Plan of Services and the Annexation, not the zoning. So, this is just for whether we can annex it and whether we can provide services to it. So, not about the, what's going on it, just that we can annex it and that we can provide services to it.
My name is Bruce White. I live at 1819 Lee Lane. All of this area, I mean, I don't know if y'all have this little map or not, but-
Yeah.
The, all of the area, the gray area back in here, it, it's, it really holds a lot of water. I've seen water back there five, six feet deep, back when it was a lot of rain coming. Now, the area over on South Rutherford is, is great land, but back in here, when you get back to the interstate, and even further up toward Lee Lane is real crawfishy. In other words, it's really, really wet. And if, if this gets developed back in here, then they're gonna have to build it up, you know, to get it up out of those water areas. And that, in turn, is gonna push that water toward Lee Lane, you know? So, that's my main concern, is that and the heavy traffic that's gonna be on Lee Lane have, and I don't see any other ways you're gonna be going with traffic coming out of there. And I don't see a rail spur going in there. So, I just wanted to, just go on record as being against the annexation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Hi, my name is Diane Parker. I live at 2101 Wimbledon Drive. This does refer to the annexation in regard to fire services being provided on the property. If we are going to block Lee Lane, then how are the fire trucks gonna get to access the property if there is a fire? I'm just questioning that. Lee Lane absolutely cannot be opened up to truck traffic, so that's just to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll need to consider, we had a question on being able to provide fire service, Mr. Blomley.
I'll take a stab at this. Mayor McFarland and, and our trustee fire marshal is, is here as well, who might be able to provide more information. But what I have to say is that there's no development plan at this time. There's a zoning request, which we'll consider momentarily, but there's no development plan. No decisions have been made on where access will be, where, you know, what the, what the specific uses will be and where they will be on the property. So, any discussion of, of how fire protection will be provided for proposed development would be speculation at this point. You know, I, so, I don't know that, that we can address that. All that we can do at this point is address, can fire protection be provided to the property in its current form, which the answer is, is that there's, the only structures that are on the property are some agricultural outbuildings, which our Fire Department has indicated that those are not substantial and that fire protection does not need to be provided to those structures at this time. But, but when development occurs, we would evaluate how fire protection is provided and make sure that appropriate measures are put into place.
Mr. Blomley, to the lady's concern there, though, there is technology available with Yelp gates and stuff like that, so that even if there were access from Lee Lane for emergency vehicles, it does not mean that the average employee or transportation truck driver, anything like that, would be able to access this property through Lee Lane if a Yelp gate or something was put in place. It would be an emergency access point only, so.
And, and would say, our response would be coming the opposite direction from Lee Lane. We're gonna be coming from either Mercury Boulevard or, or Highway, South Church Street, Station 8, that's out at South Church Street. All right. All right, can we consider Resolution 19RPS08 for a Plan of Services?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Well, now I need to consider Resolution 19RA08, the annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Wright, we have a motion is second.
Mr. LaLance?
Abstained.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Now, we'll need to consider the zoning request for 231.3 acres.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This is a larger study area, because a portion of the property that is being considered for zoning to heavy industrial is already in the city. You'll notice the area colored in orange on the map before you is property that was, that was annexed and zoned to commercial highway simultaneous with its annexation back in 2016 or 17, I believe. That was where the proposed FedEx distribution center was going to be located. As you know, FedEx is, is no longer looking to develop that property. So, the applicant is, has requested to have that property, or a portion of the property that FedEx had annexed and zoned to commercial highway, have that rezoned to heavy industrial, as well as a triangular parcel to the north that you see in purple that is not currently in the city limits. It was what you just considered for annexation. Have that zoned HI simultaneous with annexation, as well as the large purple area to the south of the orange area that would be considered, or that is, has been requested to be zoned heavy industrial simultaneous with annexation. As I mentioned before, the property is directly south of South Rutherford Boulevard. It abuts the CSX right-of-way on its east side and on its, or on its west side, excuse me, and on its southwest side, it abuts Interstate 24. Lee Lane does cut through the southern half of the property, so the property does have public street access to both South Rutherford Boulevard and to Lee Lane. The surrounding land uses are, there are a variety of surrounding land uses, and I'll pull up the aerial photography. You'll notice that there are some industrial land uses to the east across the CSX railroad tracks, or excuse me, to the west across the CSX railroad tracks, as well as to the northwest along South Rutherford Boulevard, such as Husky Trust and what was called Southern Container, which is called something else now. But the FedEx tract is, is undeveloped, as well as the property to the north of South Rutherford Boulevard. Of course, to the east of the subject property is the single-family residential subdivision, or single-family residential area that contains Lee Lane, Reedhurst Drive, and Tulip Hill Drive. Those streets are located off of Elum Road. The applicant has requested heavy industrial zoning, and heavy industrial zoning- The applicant has requested heavy industrial zoning, and heavy industrial zoning, as you know, is our most intense industrial zoning classification. We have heavy industrial and light industrial. This is somewhat of a speculative rezoning. The applicant has ideas for what he would like to do for a portion of the property, and the remainder of the property, there are no development plans on. So he is requesting to have all of this zoned heavy industrial because of the variety of uses that heavy industrial allows, which would fit his development plan for the property. With it being heavy, or with it being, with there not being a definite plan for the property, it's not a good candidate for a planned development. With a planned development, we need to have more definite plans about what the applicant would want to do for the entire property. So with that being said, we have worked with the applicant to try to find a way that will help to limit some of the more obnoxious uses that are allowed in the heavy industrial zone. As I mentioned, the heavy industrial zone is our most permissive and most intense industrial classification. So what we have discussed with the applicant and what the applicant has consented to would be that if this passes first reading, that we would delay second reading until such time as the applicant has had the opportunity to record a plat. And on that plat for the property, there would be a number of uses that would be restricted that would not be allowed on that property. This would be a form of conditional zoning, which, and Mr. Ives can elaborate on this if you wish, conditional zoning is legal in Tennessee, whereas contract zoning is not. So with conditional zoning, you're allowed to place conditions on a rezoning. And so what, a caveat that I would like to say about that is it's not something that we wish to have done on a regular basis. This is kind of a unique situation where there is an economic development opportunity, and we're looking for a potential solution to limit some of the number of more obnoxious uses. So we have come up with this, in working with the applicant and with our legal department, a way to restrict some of those uses. When there are notes on a plat, restrictions on a plat, those are the equivalent of restrictive covenants. And so by including that note on the plat, those uses would be restricted. And the list from Mr. Anthony in his memo includes the following uses: the manufacture, storage, and distribution of asbestos products, a composting facility, explosives, fertilizer, fireworks, leather and leather products, tanning and finishing, paper mills, petroleum and coal products refining, radioactive materials, manufacturer of chemicals, a junkyard, a crematory, a livestock auction, a pet crematory, a landfill, and an automobile graveyard. All of those uses are recommended by staff to be restricted, prohibited on the property via the recording of a subdivision plat after first reading, but prior to second reading. As I mentioned, this is not an option that we would recommend that you consider on a regular basis. This is the exception and not the rule. But it's a unique situation. There's a potential economic development opportunity. And one thing that I wanted to add is that we, as staff, are actually working on, in response to the council's concerns and the planning commission's concerns, working on a medium-intensity industrial zoning district. We had a public hearing at the planning commission last night. We feel that this medium-intensity zoning district would allow more uses than the light industrial zone, so be more useful for many potential industrial users, but would not allow as many of the obnoxious uses that are allowed in the heavy industrial zone. With that being said, that zoning ordinance amendment is trailing behind this zoning request, and so they wish to move forward before we had an opportunity to bring that to you. But I did want to let you know that in response to your concerns, in the past, we are moving forward with a zoning ordinance amendment that would create a third medium-intensity industrial zone. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the proposed zoning request, either before or after the public hearing. And Mr. Matt Taylor, once again, has a brief PowerPoint presentation that he would like to give you.
Mr. Blomley, the new zoning, the new zoning that's coming through, is that more, it sounds like more in line of what this property would be?
I think, in general, yes. I don't know if there are uses that they would like to have that would not be permitted in the general industrial zone, but yeah, it is more in line with what they're wanting to do, I believe.
All right, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Good evening again, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Matt Taylor of SCC. I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Jeff Reed, a local attorney in town, as well as Mr. John Harney, who's representing the applicant, Mr. Brian Berryman. We've, are here tonight to present to you what we've termed the South Rutherford Industrial Park, and we believe that you will come to see this as a place of economic development, employment, and commerce. Mr. Berryman has made this request to consolidate several of his powerful, or his successful companies. He first came to Murfreesboro in about 2010, and he's been growing ever since. He has moved three to four times across our city, and he wishes to find a final resting place and home for those businesses. He has picked this location because of the rail access. The rail marries up well with the material delivery that accompanies those companies that he runs. So we look forward to the property project. The existing conditions, the site itself is about 230 acres, as Mr. Blomley said. Most of that is wooded, with some open pasture up along the front edge of South Rutherford Boulevard. The property, about 70 acres, drains towards Rutherford Boulevard. About the other 160 drains toward I-24 to the south. As Mr. Blomley said, the property is abutted by I-24 on the south side and rail on the west, and then Rutherford Boulevard on the north. As you can see, there are several industrial uses located in the area: Husky Trust, WestRock, and Steel Technologies to the north and northwest. And then we've got Molly, General Mills, and Riches to the south. Existing zone of the property, as Mr. Blomley said, it is a mixture of REM in the unincorporated areas of Rutherford County, as well as CH, which is a remnant left over from the FedEx project. Other surrounding zonings also include other REM, as well as heavy industrial. 2035 plan envisioned portions of this as being suburban residential and others as light industrial. What change that we think that this request is appropriate is the access to rail. The last 15 to 20 years, the standard answer from CSX when being asked for a rail spur was no, and that's putting it nicely. Whenever we approached them on this project, they actually gave us two different options for rail on this. So we feel like that is a very significant change in policy and the opportunities here, so it seems to be a natural fit to allow this property to see its full potential. Proposed zoning, as Mr. Blomley said, we have proposed for all of this to be zoned heavy industrial. That's except for about two acres in the southeast corner. The green in the upper right-hand corner of this picture here was proposed by our client to remain as RS-15. That's a 25-foot strip that really runs along all the existing residences in this area. That 25-foot strip would remain RS-15 after being annexed. So none of the industrial uses could go inside that RS-15, and furthermore, that would require an additional 20-foot Type E buffer to be planted, therefore providing about 45 feet of landscaping and non-industrial uses between that and the existing residential properties to the east. Again, Mr. Blomley went over the proposed uses. Some of those will be restricted on the plat. Then my client has also, through private covenants, identified several uses, such as adult-oriented businesses, and a few other obnoxious businesses that we would restrict through those private Access plan, we would have our primary access point to come off of South Rutherford Boulevard. Any improvements there, signals, turn lanes, all those would come through the form of traffic studies that would be submitted with master plans and site plans as this starts to develop. All of our sewer, our water would come from there. Sewer will come from, more than likely, the rear, possibly from Rutherford Boulevard. One unique characteristic that I mentioned earlier is rail access. We anticipate that it would follow roughly this red line that I show here, which would parallel the existing rail line and I-24. And I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
All right. Seeing none, we'll need to open the public hearing for the zoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Christopher Dawson. I live at 2308 Reedhurst Drive in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, 37127. So taking upon hearing the zoning requests to heavy industrial, my family and I, we relocated out to that area to kind of get away from some of the growth, some of the rapid growth, the unwanted growth. Being an industrial park similar to what we saw down in Laverne and areas like that, where you have high turnover of like distribution centers and various types of avenues and areas in there, you know, we, going through and living out in that area, enjoying the nature, enjoying the quiet, enjoying the farm that's right behind our house, and like they mentioned, the water issues out there off of Lee Lane that drains out towards the interstate. The traffic impacts that we see concerns there out on Elum, there to Rutherford during the afternoons, during the mornings. We now have to go out to Joby Jackson to bypass and get around a lot of that traffic in the mornings. I know you said and mentioned that Lee Lane was not going to be used for heavy trucks. We had concerns pertaining to that. If the true right-of-way access is out on Rutherford, you know, the impacts to traffic out towards Elum and then back towards Joby Jackson, trucks use that road quite, they're not supposed to, but they use it. We see it every day. So the concerns there are legitimate concerns because of the impacts of traffic. Also, a similar situation, when I lived in Smyrna, watched the Nissan plant come in. It was also heavy industrial, but it was a great big farm. I would be there as a kid, watching the planes come in, watching a biplane dust the crops. And then Nissan comes in, and again, heavy industrial, starts building out warehouses right directly almost to our property line, and eventually buying out our family's home and then bulldozing it, because they took that lane, because the county roads and stuff that were connected to there became essentially industrial property, and then they took all those homes. So concerns, you know, eventually the farmer, or the sheriff, I mean, not sheriff, but the state trooper, who lives behind our house, who has the farm, he'll probably eventually sell. And then the rest of that property out towards the interstate, all those other residential will probably also turn into industrial or heavy industrial. So concerns there is all that will back up to our property. We were trying to make this our permanent home, but, you know, being a long-term, my wife being a long-term resident of Murfreesboro, me being a long-term resident of Smyrna, we've seen the growth, we've seen the, you know, the jobs are great when they come in. But we've also seen the high turnover in these industrial zone areas, and sometimes become much worse. So my concerns is against the property being zoned as heavy industrial. But, you know, it would be certainly a shame that my wife and I will have to move from that area because of noise, because of pollution, and other areas that concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cannon.
Thank you for indulging me again. My name is Sandra Cannon. I live at 601 North Greycroft Avenue in Madison, and I'm here representing my mom, who lives at 1802 Lee Lane, Murfreesboro, and I'm representing the rest of my family as well. I lived in Murfreesboro all of my life until 2011, when I moved to Davidson County, and I grew up, part of my life, on 1802 Lee Lane. And I was very fortunate to grow up there and experience what my mom and dad did as a wonderful home, where mom has lived for 51 years, with occasional cattle and lots of space for her to garden, and lots of room for our grandchildren to grow and play, and lots and lots of abundant wildlife. It's a quiet place at daytime, but at nighttime, for over 30 years, my mother has fought the noise from Riches Food Products that is three and a half miles from her house. I cannot imagine what the noise level will be when this is zoned, if it is zoned, heavy industrial, right across from her house. There's no house in this entire proposal that is closer to this area than my mother's. Mom's house is right beside the plat that says Merritt Lane. That's where Mom's house is located. And I cannot imagine what this level of noise will be. And I was given a reference by Mr. Matt Taylor today that indicates a 25-foot space, a designated separation space, and I said, "Mom, that's the distance from your kitchen window to your living room window. That's how far away this is. 25 feet is outrageously small, and that is not acceptable to us. Please let it be known that we are not happy with this, and that it is our desire that this zoning change not happen. That said, we do understand, as a family, that change is likely inevitable. We know, too, that our mom has a legal right to quiet enjoyment of her property. We know that a property owner's bundle of legal rights includes the right of enjoyment of the property. The city of Murfreesboro has a legal obligation to ensure that our mom enjoys the use of her property, which includes exposure to industrial noise and quality of air. We wish to offer our pleas for implementations and alterations to any plans which may already be in place in order for this committee to meet a social and moral obligation to our mother. To create a plan that will add value to the property at 1802 Lee Lane rather than decrease the property value, which we believe this will do, is decrease the property value of my mother's home and the inheritance of me and my sisters. We want to create a buffer zone or a green space that allows wildlife to continue habitation and coexistence with our mother and anyone else in the future at 1802 Lee Lane. We were told, Mom was told by a council member, that that wildlife will find somewhere else to go. We don't want that to happen. After phone calls and pleas to council members, my mom was made to believe that this rezoning would indeed be approved tonight. In a desperate attempt to maintain some type of foothold of our family, because we're the closest to all of this, we, as a family, have begrudgingly outlined some of our requests. After seeing what Mr. Taylor sent to me today, which shows a 25-foot strip, the width of my mama's house, as part of this buffer zone, which combined with a 20-foot, and that's not big enough for us, little buffer zone for 45 feet, this is what we're asking for, which we still don't think is large enough. We want to at least have a 50-foot width strip along through there with 50-feet buffer zone that is comprised of lots and lots of evergreens and flowering trees comprising dogwoods and red buds that are native Tennessee flora, to give our mom the best aesthetics possible. This larger size is necessary to allow that wildlife that we don't want to go somewhere else to inhabit the buffer area without having to seek shelter elsewhere, to cohabitate with her as it's always done. with her as it's always done. We ask that you allow our family to have input in the planning and implementation of the buffer zone to ensure that it conforms to our needs. We don't want this, but if this is what it has to come to, this is what we're asking. We ask that our family have access to the industry construction project site plan for land use. Evidently, there isn't one, but when one comes along, we'd like to see it and have input because we're the closest. We ask that no industry ever be permitted on that property that negatively affects air quality. We ask that signs be posted on Rutherford Boulevard that disallow truck drivers to use Jake brakes. I don't need to explain those, do I?
Ms. Cannon, you're representing a family, so you're at five and a half minutes already.
Okay, and I have one final statement. I'd like to invite all relative parties, you all, Mr. Berryman, Mr. Taylor, Betsy Clark, all council members, to my mama's house to see how peaceful it is. I want you to see how she lives in total peace, that the little street on that plat that's marked Merritt Lane is where mama is, and there's no pun intended, but our plea truly has merit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon.
My name is Keith Jones. I live at 127 Tenby Drive, and I don't have a personal stake in this thing, but I'm here because it seems so outrageous. I've never been in a city where you could put heavy industrial next to homes. And I covered a city that had real planning for seven years, and this would never have been even considered. And the reason is that developers there have been housebroken. They're not bad people, but you have to have rules. Evidently here, you have housebroken the developers. Now, I say Mr. Blomley's explanation really did help satisfy me a bit because I, when the minutes came about the planning commission, Mr. Anthony said this was contract zoning, and he didn't even want to do it, but he's going to do it because the developer's in a hurry. To me, planning commissions are supposed to serve community interests, not whether the developer's in a hurry. I think the issue here is whether you're, who's going to plan? You're going to have rapid growth here. The issue here is who's going to plan it? Are the professional planners going to plan it, or are you going to have the developers plan it? It's about not putting in our, it's not a backyard type of argument. It's about not putting in our backyards what you wouldn't tolerate in your own. You have all the trappings of planning here, but I don't think you have real planning. It looks like theater to legitimize your bad behavior. I've interviewed all the 19 other cities in this state that have planning, talked to their either planning directors or a chief planner, and not, there was only one exception. Nobody else would consider doing what you're doing, only Memphis. That's the company you're in. I don't see why you have zoning at all or planning at all if you think incompatible uses like industry belong next to homes. It's a real simple argument. Now, I'm a little, I feel a little better because your buffer's bigger, because you've been using a buffer so far that's a little bigger than my living room. The length of my living room, it's also maybe less than a third of a stolen base in baseball, and it's not even a first down in football. Now, maybe 45 feet is a little better, but it's really kind of ridiculous. It just wouldn't fly in a city that's serious about planning. My concern is you hired a consultant, paid, probably paid him a lot of money to plan for 20 years, and yet you seem to be, have no problem in ignoring his recommendations. He say, this, if this is granted, basically his land use plan becomes a farce because any developer can say, "Well, you granted an exception to this. You allowed heavy industries, so why can't I have the same exception?" So what's the use of the land use plan? Now, when I went to a planning, one of those pep rallies that you held, Mr. Lyons said his purpose really in this whole thing was to come out with a general plan. Well, we didn't get that, I think, because the developers oppose it. What we got is a land use map, and evidently you can brush aside a land use map, almost like you can brush aside an index. We know the trouble with HI, two years ago, I asked you to have a zone, a zoning thing that would be clean and not with all these lousy uses. Instead, you got to do all these shenanigans to make it legal or to make it work. I'm really thrilled that you're finally going to do a general industrial.
Mr. Jones, thank you so much.
I need about 2, 30 seconds. That's not unreasonable, because three minutes is ridiculous. What I'm saying is-
Mr. Jones.
Your general industrial plan-
Mr. Jones.
Why don't you delay this? Give the residents a sop-
Please have a-
And just own a general industrial.
Please have a seat, Mr. Jones. Thank you.
You don't have equal rules here.
I appreciate you coming.
No, you don't.
Well, there you go. Next, who would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Joanne Plow, and I live at 2232 Elam Road. This is not the first time I've sat in a meeting such as this and heard different people plead and heard it didn't matter because the decisions are always made prior to even us speaking. Doesn't seem to matter. Heavy industrial backing up to a residential area that has been there for 40, 50 years? 60 years? Is ridiculous. There are homes. You're going to kill our property values. You're going to kill our right to live in our homes. This is my forever home. I don't plan on going anywhere. I live on Elam Road. At multiple meetings, I have pleaded to stop the 18-wheelers, the traffic that goes down Elam Road. I have been promised at numerous meetings, it will be looked at, it will be addressed. It has not. Three years now, has not. At the last meeting in March, when I was here, I was told it would be looked at. You're going to say, "Well, there's no plans right now to access Lee Lane onto Elam Road to go to Joby Jackson." Yeah, okay. I don't believe you. I believe down the line, plans are already made. Heavy industrial is destroying neighborhoods. I don't have a problem. I know companies are going to come, things are going to be done, and the initial person that is going to utilize roughly 130 acres of a 232-acre property, he's not going to live forever either. People are going to come in, companies are going to come in, companies are going to go out. You're going to destroy that area. I remember many years ago when I told someone where I purchased my home, their response was ew, because it was on the south side of Murfreesboro. I love this town. I love the square. I love everything it has to offer. And three years ago, people were actually saying ew. I don't want it to continue to be ew. I want something to be done. I don't want you to think about what you're going to do. That buffer is insane. That's ridiculous. You're going to put trees up? Winter's going to come. Things are going to fall off. That's ridiculous. That is, as long as our house. It has to do better than that. And I know lawyers get paid a lot of money, towns pay a lot of money, lawyers think they're God, but there are people that care. I care about this town. I care about my home. I care about the traffic. I care about people getting harmed, whether by pollution or noise or stress or whatever. Heavy industrial backing up to a neighborhood is sacrilegious.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers.
My name is Eric Plow. I'm your husband. I also live at 2232 Elam Road. And I have to basically parrot everything that my wife and all of my neighbors have said. So I'll make this quick. Allowing that property behind our house to be turned into heavy industrial is ridiculous. These are homes, and I'd sure like to see how any of you would react if somebody wanted to put this in your backyard, because I don't think any one of you would be happy about it. Light industrial? I'm okay with that, personally. Putting in more homes, single-family homes, that makes sense to me. I get it, the area's growing. Heavy industrial behind our homes, the air pollution, the noise pollution, it's already bad enough, the noise pollution. But my wife and I moved here to get away from the noise. We bought our house because it's a beautiful piece of property surrounded by more beautiful That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Plow.
Hello, my name is Diane Parker. I live at 2101 Wimbledon Drive in Murfreesboro. If you look on the map, you'll see that my property butts up to part of the property on the south end that is requesting the heavy industrial zoning. I've sent an email to each of the councilmen outlining my, well, I'm not in approval of it. It's not that I'm not in approve of the annexation. One day, I might be in front of you asking my property to be annexed into the city. However, I am very much opposed to heavy industrial. I second everything that Ms. Cannon said. I would like to be informed about what's going on with the property. Between my house and that property, there's a field. I currently have horses. There's a lot of wildlife. There's enough buffer between my house and that property right now, but if I eventually want to subdivide my property, who's going to buy it? Who's going to want to put houses next to heavy industrial? I would really like to see some site plans for what's going to go on behind my house. It does flood a lot, and I represent, I forgot to say, I do represent two or three families in my neighborhood. I would like to see site plans about what's going on. That's what concerns me is the request for heavy zoning with no site plan about what's going to go on the property. Heavy industrial means trucks. I work in transportation. I do that for a living. Truck traffic on South Rutherford, that's built for it. Truck traffic on Elam Road, Elam Road is not built for it. They're going to find a background to get to Elam Road to get to Joby. Truckers use their GPS, they're going to find that way. Your 2035 plan has a connection going from Tulip Hill to South Rutherford back to Elam. Tulip Hill comes out on Elam. You've got that, you've got the 2035 site plan, I don't need to point it out, but you have that as a connection. So they're going to come from that industrial park, if the only access they have is on South Rutherford. Instead of turning left to go to Church Street, they're going to turn right, they're going to go on that Tulip Hill access to get to Elam Road to get to Joby. Right now, Elam Road cannot support truck traffic, and we have it already. I really just question the zoning. I call on manufacturing companies and industrial parks all around Tennessee and Kentucky. Most of them are very well planned out with five lanes of road to sustain the truck traffic. There's not residents around the industrial zones. If there is residents, if you look at your General Mills on Butler Road, you've got a residence behind that, but you're separated by the Stones River, and you're separated by enough buffer between those houses. But a 45-foot buffer between my property is not enough. It's just not enough. One day, I may want to sell. Right now, I want to stay there, but I don't want the traffic. My main concern is the truck traffic. If you make this property into an industrial zone, and it's really not designed, even in your major, your land use plan, it's not designed, that's not what was recommended for this land, but I understand growth has got to happen, it's got to go somewhere. He wants use of the rail, that's fine. But there's got to be another access for the truck traffic, and it can't be Elam Road. And right now, that's the only access they're going to have. I mean, Church Street is already clogged up, too. That's why FedEx backed out, because they did a traffic study and South Rutherford couldn't sustain the truck traffic.
Thank you.
So I just, I don't feel like it's a good fit. I'm concerned about the contract zoning. I don't know what that under, what that means. So, you know, I'm a landowner. Thank you.
I'm Lucille Nunley. My daughter has already spoken how I feel about what's going on on my street. It does affect me more than anybody else because my house is right 250 feet on the front of this property and my, at the south of my house, it comes right up to my fence. So you see, I am really close to it. I'm very much opposed to the zoning, to the heavy industrial. I could go with light industrial, all right, but I know there's not a one of you that would like to have this heavy industrial zoning right in your backyard, and I hope you will consider that very much. I'm very happy with where I am. I've been there 91, 51 years at this location. It's been my home. I've raised my children, my grandchildren there, and it's their favorite place to come to in all the world. I ask you, please, consider it.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nancy Franklin. I live at 2232 Parry Court in the new Summersby, right off Elam Road. I moved there, and I had this house built because I wanted it on the other side of Barfield Crescent, and the traffic and the noise is too much. So I moved up there, and I absolutely love it. It's quiet, it's peaceful, it's very relaxing to me. And now you're going to put this big industrial right there on South Rutherford. The traffic that comes down there is unbelievable. I work at one of those big places on South Rutherford, and I know how hard it is to get out. People can't get out there, so they take a right and go down Elam and cut through to go to Joby Jackson. So it doesn't take them 45 minutes to go on the way of South Church Street all the way down the road. They take a left, a right off South Rutherford, go down Elam, go down Joby Jackson, and then they're on South Church Street, and they do it every day. I'm begging you, please do not put this in there for the traffic and also for these people in their lovely homes. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and councilman. For 24 years, I'm Mike Brashler. I live at 1830 Lee Lane, and for 24 years, that's been my residence. I live just across the lot from Ms. Nunley. Distance from my property to this zoned area, or this requested zoning, is about 300 feet. It would definitely affect my family's life. Traffic on Lee Lane, no matter what you say, is going to change. It's a dead-end road. There's no, there's only two houses past mine on my side of the street, and there's a dead end at the end of that. And no matter what you say, this rezoning is going to be the nose under the tent. And I know that you can change anything you want to change after this point, but the rezoning is not necessary. If you look at that, you put a spur line between I-24 and our side of the property, you're not going to have much room for roadway to get to these industrial areas. And if you had a buffer zone that's anywhere near appropriate for this area to buffer between our properties and these industrial areas that you're wanting to approve, there's not any space for any expansion there of these businesses. If you walk the property like I have and look at it, then you would know that this is not a good zoning request for this end by Lee Lane. The only access there is to put a frontage road behind, next to your spur line, all the way out to Elam Road on the other end to Joby Jackson. That's not even proposed. There is no proposal here that really supports what you're trying to approve here. If it was well thought through and you had an access road going from Elam Road out to Rutherford, yes, we could talk about that, but you have no real plan, you have no real site plan of these areas that you're wanting to develop into industrial, and there's really no cause for it. The 2035 plan, we were against really because this is a single residence area, but we have to make concessions because development is going to come. But if you walk that property and look at it from one end to the other, it's not suitable for what you proposed. If you, in order to have access both for traffic, to get in and out of those businesses, and for export through the rail line, there's not room there. So there, on a lot of different levels, this is not a good plan, and I oppose it, and I represent also a couple of neighbors next to me.
My name is Jim Michaels. I live at 1923 Tulip Hill Drive and have for the last 55- I live at 1923 Tulip Hill Drive and have for the last 55 years, and I've just, excuse me, I've just got one question for the members of this board. If this property were as close to your houses as it is to ours, would you vote for it?
Thank you, Ms. Schmager.
Good evening. My name is Don Bolton. I live at 2003 Tulip Hill Drive. I have two concerns, and one of them is traffic, and I think you hear about traffic all the time on Elam Road, and I think I can speak for all of my neighbors. Sometimes you can't get out of Elam Road on either end unless the graciousness of those drivers that put a blinker on and let us get out on Manchester Highway. The other is noise. You can go outside my house tonight, and you can hear the people cutting steel over there, or some big press whammie. I'm a little concerned about if this is a construction building of buildings, is that gonna go on 24 hours a day or not? So, those are my two concerns. But Elam being a two-lane road without any, you know, the ditch is right up next to the road, there's no way trucks can turn in on Lee Lane, and for sure, we don't need any more truck traffic on Elam Road, and a signal on both ends of Elam would help tremendously both at Joby Jackson and at Manchester Highway. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of the City Council. I'm Brick Murfree. My law practice is at 805 South Church Street, Suite 21. My family, through the Mary Kay Murfree Family Partnership, owns some property across Rutherford Boulevard from this property. It's about, our property's about 89 acres, and we've owned it since the Depression, so almost 100 years now. My family developed or sold the property where Husky Lumber and Trust is, and also where Rock Ten is, used to be known as Southern Container. For years, we tried to get rail access, and in fact, for a while, we had a contract with Mr. Berryman, and it fell through due to rail access issues. Now that that's been resolved, you know, we feel like as a family that it's appropriate that this property be zoned heavy industrial. It's close to the rail, it's a logical use. We need to keep businesses like this in town. I don't represent Mr. Berryman, but I know him, he's a good man, it's a good business, and we need to keep it here. So, we just ask you to vote in favor of the application, and we support it as a family. Thank you.
I know I've already been up here once. My name is Bruce White, 1819 Lee Lane. The big concern about the rezoning for the heavy industrial is when you bring in the spur line down by the interstate, all of that holds water this deep, even probably now, it's probably a foot deep. But when we get a lot of water and a lot of runoff down through there, it goes back to the back to where the interstate is. And if you go in there and you build all that up with, with rock, then it's gonna cause a back problem. It's gonna cause problem flooding back up into the areas where we live at. I'm all about progress and building, and that's how I make my living. But this just isn't the appropriate place for this type of development, I don't, I don't think. And I think if you really consider it, this is a quiet neighborhood area. We do get some noise from the other plants out there on Joby Jackson and all the way over on South Church, you know, from, from Riches and all them. But, you know, we, we, we deal with that. But if you put this in there, that's gonna be right in our backyard, and we'd just like for you to consider just not, not zoning out for heavier, heavy industrial. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. White. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Blomley, we had several questions. Wanna, I think the majority of y'all went around three major items: buffering from, from the single-family homes, drainage, and traffic.
Yes, sir, and I'll do my best to answer what I can, and I'll go ahead and give Mr. Huddleston a heads up, that I may need his assistance on a couple of those issues as well. Let me pull up the zoning map here. So, Mr. Taylor mentioned the buffer. There was distances discussed of 25 and 20 feet. The 25 that he's referring to is an area here, if you follow that blue line on the map. So, what was omitted from the zoning request at Planning Commission, and Planning Commission sent it to you with this omission, was the 25 feet directly adjacent to the residential areas on the southeast side of the, of the requested area, so the, basically the area that, that I've, that I've drawn on there. So, that area, it's in the annexation request, but it's not in the zoning request. So, since it's zoned, RM and the county would come in with a zoning request, or zoning classification of RS-15 to the, so the adjacent 25 feet to those residential lots in the county would be zoned RS-15. So, what has been alluded to as the 20-foot buffer is the Type E buffer that's located in our zoning ordinance. The Type E buffer is the standard required buffer in between single-family residential zones and both heavy and light industrial zoning classifications. It's a 20-foot wide, continuous strip of land that is, that its purpose is to provide screening. It's planted with, it's densely planted with evergreen trees and shrubs, densely planted with evergreen trees and shrubs. So, when they talk about the 45 feet, be the 25 feet of RS-15 that could not be developed with industrial uses, and then the 20-foot standard Type E buffer, which is our most stringent buffer in our zoning ordinance. As far as traffic, I will mention that our major thoroughfare plan does, and I heard that, I heard this mentioned, there is, there, there is a road project on our major thoroughfare plan that Mr. Huddleston may wish to speak to, and he can correct me if I'm wrong in the way that I'm drawing it. Of course, on our major thoroughfare plan, it's a, it's a, like, looking at a satellite view, the, the, the lines that are on our major thoroughfare plan depicting planned roadway improvements are not exact and are not meant to be parcel-specific, but you have a roadway that intersects with Rutherford Boulevard, comes down Tulip Hill, and then crosses Elam over to, I believe, around Erby Lane, and Mr. Huddleston can, he's giving me the thumbs up. So, that is a road project that's on the major thoroughfare plan that was approved by the Planning Commission last year to help provide some, some relief in the area. And Mr. Huddleston may wish to speak further about, about the benefits that that, that project may have. As far as drainage also, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Huddleston may, may wish to address, may wish to address that. As far as traffic access, as I mentioned during the annexation public hearing, this is a rezoning to HI for a land use entitlement to HI. There are no plans that have been submitted. So, really, any speculation about, about where access will and will not occur is speculation at this point. And what type of access would be, would be allowed to Lee Lane, we can't really say at this point because this is, this is a rezoning, this is for a land use entitlement. It's not a planned development, so there are, there are no plans before you that show how the, how the, the property would be, would be developed. So, now, if Mr. Huddleston would like to elaborate a little bit further on the proposed roadway network, I'll defer to him on that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. I think just to add to, to Mr. Blomley's statement and to remind us of a commitment that Mr. Taylor made here, the development plan will require a traffic impact study. What we, what we do know is that they will have access proposed to Rutherford, and, and most of their access will be oriented toward Rutherford in the initial phases. What we don't know is, is at this point, they do not have a proposed user, as far as I know, for any of the property to the south. We would, we would need to study that, those traffic patterns with them and their master plan, and then also do some projections with that along with their traffic impacts on to Rutherford. Our, our road network in this area, really, one roadway improvement is not an answer. It's, it's a, has to be a multi-pronged approach to I-24, to Elam Road, to South Rutherford, to Joby Jackson. And I think our major thoroughfare plan has demonstrated those needs and also demonstrated the types of projects that are needed to, to address our transportation needs there for, for the next 20 years. In addition to that, our traffic department continues to, to work on our, our access and signalization along South Church Street. South Church Street's a tough corridor for us, but, but there are some things that we can do to squeeze a little bit more capacity out of that, and, and those projects have been presented here before Council. So, what I would say about our traffic and transportation is it's got to be a multi-phase approach. One road, one project doesn't make it, really takes a, a community effort. T-Dot involved in that as well with interchange improvements at I-24 and, and Joby Jackson, and also roadway improvements with Manchester Highway. I think this property is, is located in a part of our community that, to, to the east, I'm sorry, to the west and north already has a, a very strong industrial presence. We're located adjacent to a rail spur. I think that's been pointed out. Access to the interstate at South Church Street and also at Joby Jackson makes, makes these properties along the interstate attractive for industrial improvements. And so, there are a lot of right elements that are in place for this land use, and certainly the, the traffic and, and transportation needs of our community would have to be addressed with the developer and with the city and T-Dot projects. I think Mr. Taylor has reviewed the drainage much more extensively than I have, and I would, gonna look over my shoulder and see if that's correct, and would, would like from, to perhaps address that. I do know that most comments about drainage tended to be to the property to the south and, and a potential rail spur there and that drainage under I-24, but I'm gonna ask Mr. Taylor to, to just come up and assist me with that if he would.
Mr. Huddleston, while you're there, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The next item on our agenda, we're looking at annexing some areas, and I know I promised these people when they came to the Planning Commission that I would do everything I could to help their situation with Elam Road. And currently, we are looking at annexing segments of Elam Road, and that annexation, even though it's a county road going onto a state highway, with that annexation, we would have the ability as a city to go out there and put signalization in there. Is that not correct?
The, and, and I think you're talking about the, the item that's next, and the, and the Elam Road at Joby Jackson, is that, that's the part you're talking about?
Well, even at Manchester.
At Manchester? Yes, and, and so, with, with the Joby Jackson area, I think we, we talked about this, the Planning Commission, that interchange and the signalization of that interchange would then become a city issue, and, and I think we would be, we'd need, we'd just need to address that. I can say that T-Dot is reviewing the, a, a project right now for Joby Jackson Parkway. We wanna partner with them to, to see those interchange improvements to help with the flow of traffic on and off of the interstate. Those side roads, Butler and Elam, have to be a part of that as well in, in how we interact with those. Elam and Manchester Highway, it's a, it's, it's really too close to Rutherford Boulevard for signalization for most of our guidelines, and, and so, a different remedy, quite honestly, is needed there. One of the remedies we proposed in our major transportation plan is the route that Mr. Blomley drew on there. That would give us a, a better location to enter, to signalize an intersection. However, that's a line on the page, and the roadway we have at, at Elam and Manchester is the issue today, and, and that is, that's a, that's a, I'll just say it's a challenge for us.
And also, the, the topic was brought up, of concern with traffic on Lee Lane, and if, and I know for me personally, and I'm only speaking for myself, I will not ode in favor of making Lee Lane a thoroughfare or a cut-through for emergency use only. There would rarely be an exception where there would be an emergency vehicle that would go down Lee Lane if a site plan were brought before me. That would permit traffic to come down that roadway for anything other than emergency use, it's not acceptable. So, I just wanna go on the record saying that upfront, so everybody can hear it, and we'll do the best we can to encourage others to follow in those footsteps.
And I'll, I'll be glad to come back up after Mr. Taylor if we have some more discussion or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston. The drainage, the water does fall toward I-24 on this southern portion in the neighborhood of Ms. Nunley and Mr. White, I believe was his name. Their, their houses are in the neighborhood of being at an elevation of about 630. When you get to the bottom of the property, it's about 610. There's other properties that run, they go further south from Ms. Nunley's that approach 640, so you, there are 20 to 30 feet of fall between there and the bottom of our discharge underneath I-24. So, we would not back any water up on them. We can't legally do that. It's not something we ethically do, and probably would be near impossible. Matter of fact, I think Mr. White's property is over the hill. He, the water drains away from our property from his, so we can't even make the water flow that way. The northern half of the property, or northern 70 acres of our property drains toward South Rutherford Boulevard. It intertwines, and some of it goes straight to South Rutherford, some of it goes onto the west side of Husky Trust that's currently directly to our north side. I think there may be a stream that runs through that portion adjoining Husky Trust. So, we feel very confident. I know that there's pipes underneath I-24 that discharge down near LTA, or lanes, trains, and automobiles, and continue on from there underneath the rail line and spurs there to get back to the river eventually. So, we're, we're very confident. There may be pockets of standing water out there. There's probably some karst terrain, looking at the soils types and the topo that I see out there, there are very likely some karst terrain, but that is not unusual for Murfreesboro or Rutherford County in whole. We find those features on nearly every project, and I, some projects I wish I had as much fall as I do on this project. The previous project up here, if I had half this fall, probably wouldn't have the same drainage issues they were talking about, frankly. As far as the road network internally, we would start on South Rutherford. That's where we're gonna have to start to access our potable water. That is a, a much better front door, frankly, and that is part of Mr. Berryman's request. He intends to locate kind of his corporate headquarters and his office jobs here. It's gonna be more of an office environment. That's, that's where he wants to be, is on that side, and then build from there. And that's where the utilities and infrastructure are, so that's where it makes the most sense. The southern portion of this property would be the very last portion. You're right, we don't have any definitive plans there, but it's very possible that Mr. Berryman would develop and build on the entire thing. If you know Mr. Berryman, he is very entrepreneurial. and build on the entire thing. If you know Mr. Berryman, he is very entrepreneurial. I think whenever I met him, he had one business. It was Old Hickory Barnes. I think at this point, he's got three to four businesses, and they're all thriving across our, across our nation and into Canada. So he is the spirit of America, to be quite honest with you. And then, some of the uses, we have tried to take out the most obnoxious uses through not only the conditional zoning that Mr. Blomley said, but also through our private restrictions. When we started looking at those, Mr. Berryman said, "Yeah, I wouldn't want those next to my house either. So let's get rid of those right now, on my own," before we make our request. And, let's see. As far as having input on each individual use, I think our community has done a good job setting that stage through the site plan process. Every use that comes through has to go through a public review process through the city's planning department. And as Mr. Smotherman said, that planning commission will have the opportunity to review each individual site plan and any plaits. And so they'll be able to control not only the use and orientation of buildings, but they'll be able to control access to not only Rutherford Boulevard, but any access to Lee Lane that we would have at any internal road network designs. As far as individual drivers, we can't control every driver, every truck driver, every person that comes to work. What we can do is try to make things easier and encourage them to go certain ways. A few months ago, I pulled out the old FedEx traffic study. They had actually went in and made some recommendations on signal improvements at South Rutherford, or South Rutherford and South Church Street that was going to improve the operation of that intersection. I would anticipate our project would have similar recommendations and similar expectations, therefore encouraging to go back towards South Church Street rather than back toward Elam. So if I missed anything or you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Those are the high points that I heard.
Mr. Taylor, I think I understand. You're talking about a project that's going to be phased in. It's not something that's...
Yes, sir.
He doesn't have a plan for what he's going to do with this at the present time?
Not for the entire property, he does not. He does have several uses he wants to consolidate here, but not for the entire property yet. He has ideas, but nothing concrete for the entire thing yet.
Can I talk to Mr. Blomley just a minute, if you'll come up? You mentioned that it's in the pipeline to have an alternative zoning. What is the timeframe on that?
It actually went to planning commission last night.
When are we going to get it?
Yeah, yeah. It went to planning commission last night, received a recommendation of approval from planning commission, and I expect to bring it to you, not next Thursday, but the Thursday after that, to schedule a public hearing. So I would say that we would be looking at mid to late June for a city council public hearing.
And my understanding is, the way it's presented now, we're having to kind of jerry-rig something to restrict certain usage?
That'd be one way of looking at it.
To heavy industrial use. So we're having to accept it and then have some type of gentleman's agreement, or gentlelady's agreement, whatever, some type of thing that just says, "We don't have it in concrete. There's nothing really enforceable from the city's side."
Mr. Ives could speak more to the enforceability. I believe that the restrictions on a plat would carry more weight from the city's standpoint than private restrictions that they're volunteering. And Mr. Ives could speak to that. He would...
That would be true. The applicants have volunteered to put certain restrictions on the plat. And Mr. Blomley read through those earlier. I remember they were some of the, you might say, more noxious potential uses. They would be prohibited on the plat. As a plat note, that would be enforceable by the city, just as any other notation or function of the plat would be enforceable by the city. So it would have the force of the city behind it. They have also volunteered to disallow or prohibit some other uses through a restrictive covenant. The restrictive covenant would not be enforceable by the city. It would be enforceable by, potentially, depending on how it's written, it might be enforceable by adjoining landowners or other people that have an interest in this project. But they're definitely not enforceable by the city. I would also mention that, along with this, creating the sort of mid-level industrial that we're talking about, we are actually talking about removing some currently allowable uses completely from our zoning ordinance. And I don't have that list in front of me, but something like, for instance, a, I think, a landfill currently is an allowable use in an HI zone. We plan to delete that. It just doesn't seem to us that a landfill is ever going to be in appropriate use within the city of Murfreesboro. And so, rather than have it there in the zoning ordinance as something that people could be worried about, which they should be if it's there and allowable use, we're proposing to remove that and a few other uses that, just take them completely out of the zoning ordinance, so they would never be allowed, you know, in the city of Murfreesboro as a, in the zoning ordinance.
Mr. Taylor, is the applicant aware of the changes that we're considering?
Well, I have not even myself reviewed the new, because it's so, so new. What I did tell Mr. Blomley was, so that our restrictions could be enforced by the city, we would not have an issue with those being put on the plat, the same as the other ones already stated here earlier. I don't know what Mr. Ives' thought on that is, but we had already agreed and didn't have any issue with the others. So we don't have any issue with that.
I'd be glad to talk to Mr. Taylor and planning staff, and we'll, assuming that this should go forward, we can report back to that on second, before a second reading.
Mr. Taylor, the request was made by one lady, I think she referred to cherry trees and dogwood trees and several other trees that she thought would be attractive behind her mother's home. And those trees drop leaves in the wintertime. Those would not be good trees to have in a buffer zone. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that Type E, which is the most restrictive, and I will say, the strip that we're talking about leaving is RS-15, is, would remain basically untouched. I don't know why there would ever be, why it would be touched, except maybe to clean it out or something. But the new plantings would all be the Type E, which would be heavy evergreens, tall, short, so that as it grows in, you get a complete buffer from top to bottom, rather than having gaps.
Mr. Blomley, one more time. So, Mr. Blomley, will you explain how the buffering works, if there are existing trees and those things that are there?
Sure, sure. And I think, just to add on to what Mr. Taylor just said, the 25 feet that they're proposing to leave is RS-15, they're saying that that would basically remain untouched. So if there are any trees within that 25 feet, because the 25 feet that zoned RS-15 would have really very little utility to them as, if they're developing it as heavy industrial. In addition, there would have to be a solid 20-foot strip of evergreen planting. So it would essentially, that would cut off access to that 25 feet of RS-15 zoning. So you'd have the 25 feet of RS-15 zoning, that whatever vegetation is on that, is on that 25 feet, would likely remain. And then you would have the 20-foot strip of new plantings. And that 20-foot strip of new plantings would primarily consist of evergreen trees and shrubs that would stay green year-round and grow. And ultimately, the goal of that would be to form a screen, a barrier, if you will, a visual barrier between the industrial uses and the residential uses to provide that, to provide that screen.
Let me speak to something that's a bigger issue than just this one. You know, when we did the 2035 plan, you know, the goal of planning, in the general sense, is to give reasonable expectations to existing property owners and give those same reasonable expectations to people who are willing to make an investment or develop property. And you look at things, but you realize, and we said this in the midst of that process, that some of you attended, it's a living document. A planning document is a living document, because it changes. You know, there's not too many of us that were, that have lived here all our lives. And Ms. Nunley has, and we had a great conversation about her life here in our community. We value it, but we've become a very attractive community, because a lot of people want to come here, in spite of all the traffic, in spite of all the challenges to a growing community. But the 2035 plan needs regular review, and it needs a look. And our planning department, in a workshop a few weeks ago, told us that we're creating this annual review of this 2035 plan and our land use, so that, and we can update the public, and we can update the development community as to where these opportunities are, because things change. I wanted you to speak for just a minute about what has made this change seem more reasonable to look at, an opportunity to look at. And it was brought up, but, you know, to focus on why this is being changed from, even if you took the CH to HI, what changed in this whole general area to make us something to have, that we should consider?
Well, I think it's up to the applicant to make that case. I think what he has stated is the access to rail spur is what is making this a more attractive site for industrial uses. Ultimately, whether or not, ultimately, the choice to deviate from the 2035 comprehensive plan is in the hands of the city council as it makes this rezoning request, or as it considers this rezoning request. And then, the planning commission will then, will then need to take up at some point in the future, an amendment to the, to the future land use map. Mr. Shackleton, to speak to what you just said, yes, it is a living, breathing document. And as Mr. Anthony stated in the workshop several weeks ago, we are, it is one of our top priorities right now, to update it, and to not only look at areas where we have made decisions, zoning decisions, that are counter to what the plan recommends, that we have determined that it's appropriate to deviate from the plan, but also to look forward and see what areas on the future land use map need to be revised, even absent a zoning request, where we think that other uses, other than what has been identified on the future land use map, are appropriate. And so, that is, that is one of our priorities, and I will reinforce what Mr. Anthony told council a few weeks ago, that we will be working on that in the very near future.
And the challenge in this area, if you've lived here, some of you've lived here many, many years in this area, and I remember sanding for crawfish in that little creek that's out that direction. And it's changed. It changed when you moved in. And the difficult thing is, your residents, many of you are in the county. And yet, you're in very close proximity to schools, to shopping opportunities. And that's the positive, but the negative is that you've got growth coming around you. And I feel the struggle that you're having to face, but what I think this body has to consider is what is in the best interest, not just of neighborhoods, but of the whole community. And this may or may not, you know, it does have a negative impact on some individuals. Every time we make a decision, it has a negative impact on somebody. We want it to be the same as it always has been, but we all realize that it's not going to be that way. Things are going to change. And while, you know, you can say, "I want my, I want my life and my lifestyle and my quality of life protected." In a dynamic community like this, it's a real challenge to say that, to meet all of those expectations of people who want to move here, want to have jobs, want to have opportunities, and then those of us that have been here for a long period of time. You know, it is, it is a difficult challenge, and I hope you realize that we're taking it serious. I've heard some people say that, you know, so much of what we do is motivated by the development community. I can, I can promise you that we're all trying to not just make the decisions that benefit us economically, but we're trying to make the right decisions as well. And some of the times, and sometimes...
Sir, please.
It means that on the long, on the, on the other side, we anticipate that there is an infrastructure that has to take place that will probably, you know, the road structure and the road system that supports this kind of development, this proposal, has yet to be determined. But it will go through a real strict review. The drainage and all those other things that you're concerned about will go through a strict review.
Thank you, Bill.
I think the follow-up on what Bill said is, there will always be resistance to change, whether it's apartments going in behind your home, or whether or not it's a new home going in behind your home, or whether it's an industrial area going in behind your home. It's completely understandable. I'll plead guilty to saying the animals will find a new home, because when my home was built 50 years ago, the animals did find a new home. Every project that we look at in the city of Murfreesboro today, we do not have an animal relocation program. There's probably not a single lot in Murfreesboro that doesn't have a groundhog, or a skunk, or a possum, or something living on it. And when it's developed and a home is put on that property, all of our homes displaced animals. And so, that's not, I won't say it's not a concern of ours, but it's not something that we have the ability to control. As the city continues to grow, we have to understand that the wildlife will move downstream, or they will move further up the road somewhere. But it, it's, the intention's not to destroy wildlife habitat, but the city's not a wildlife refuge either. And so, when we, when we look at the city and we make these changes, we know there's going to be an impact on wildlife. But the, and the other advice I gave Ms. Nunley in our conversation was, please try and work with us to make as good a development as we can, if it's going to take place. And if it does take place, it doesn't benefit anyone to come up here and just say, "I'm opposed to it," and dig your heels in the ground, because, I'm not going to say it's going to happen, but I say there's a chance that it will happen. And if you don't win on the argument of trying to prevent it from happening completely, then you need to try and leverage your position to get as much as you possibly can out of the developer and the builder, to things that benefit you. Let's see if we can't preserve the sanctity of Lee Lane. Let's see if we can't try and improve the traffic situation on Elam Road. There can be benefits that come from development, and we all know that if this thing is developed, it will create jobs, what we think will be very good jobs, and opportunities for our children to have employment. And so, I do think there's, there's a plus side to every negative argument that we hear about this. And I hope that, when it's all said and done, Murfreesboro's a better place because of whatever we do. And that's truly, I think, the majority of our desire. It's not a done deal. It's not something that we're just trying to take care of developers. I've never taken a dime from a developer. I've never benefited from any project that we have approved at planning commission or at city council. It just don't happen. We look at these things as impartially as we possibly can, and try to make the best decision on what is best for Murfreesboro. And the living document that we have, that we refer to as... And the living document that we have that we refer to as the 2035 Plan, it's just completely ridiculous to think that that will never change, because it has to change. Because when roadways change and you create intersections, areas that may have been perfect places for homes are no longer perfect places for homes. They're good places for quicksacks and businesses that apply services to the neighborhoods that are around them. So, so conditions change, and when they change, there will be this body having to make that decision as to whether or not the zoning of the property is appropriate, or is it appropriate to change it at this time? So, that's all I've got.
One thing, if we are considering a, a, a change in our zoning, an alternative that would allow some security for the existing property owner, is it, is it just too much to ask to postpone the assignment of that until we have some clarity so that it's not just an assumption that we're going to take people at their word, or, or we're going to, you know, write it into a document that somehow, I mean, if it's weeks away from providing that, could, could we wait to have, to have that and see if, and work with Mr. Taylor to see if the zoning, we can make it fit?
If I may, I, I just pulled up the proposed ordinance on my phone, and there are some very specific uses in there that are, would be prohibited under this medium, or I think it's general industrial, that my client would need, specifically relating to the production or the storage of lumber, as well as some metal production, and those are vital to his business. And so, those would not, that general industrial would not work for our request.
Okay.
We, we did hear several comments about the width of the buffer. Talked to my clients, and we're willing to increase that so it'd be a total of a 60 rather than the 45 on the landscape buffers on that, in that southeastern portion. And then we would work closely with the county highway department to make sure Lee Lane is posted appropriately for heavy trucks and so forth as well, so.
Those recommended changes, would they be a part of a motion if we made them tonight, or would they, with planning department, work that out? How would that work? Matthew?
Mr. Martin, I think that we would need to get clarification on, you know, the standard buffer that the ordinance requires is 20, so I'm not sure if Mr. Taylor is requesting to remove an additional 15 feet from the request. That would be RS-15, so for a total of 40 feet of RS-15, and then the 20-foot buffer. So I think I would need clarification on what he is volunteering to do.
That's it.
Yes, I believe that's what he is doing. So if, if that's what you chose to, to vote on, then we would, then we would revise the, the ordinance map, taking an additional 15 feet out of the zoning request. And, as you mentioned, that would bring it from 45 feet to 60 feet, which would be the interior edge of the, of the required buffer.
But we could make a motion for that tonight, and it would show up in the second reading as presented, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
No, please, go ahead.
I say, and, and any, any motion that, that you make, we would recommend that it be subject to the, the, the plat conditions that Mr. Anthony has outlined in his, in his memo that's in the agenda packet, the list of uses that I read previously.
I think the only other comment I'll make, we've kind of touched on this, but this is a really unique opportunity for our city from the standpoint of having access to a rail spur. I mean, there are not a dozen of those around that we can connect to, and, and we spent a lot of time talking about jobs and economic opportunities and trying to bring jobs here. This is a business owner that is here in Murfreesboro that, you know, I know only by reputation, but I think, obviously, we have to give him the appropriate zoning that he would need for his business use. But having said that, I do think he would be a good neighbor based on, only by what I know of reputation. So, I, I support the project. If, if there are other comments, I'm happy to defer a motion, but I'm also happy to make a motion based on extending the, the buffer zone, knowing that, that that's one of the asks for a lot of the folks in the audience. So if you'll help me with that, I'll be happy to make that motion.
Does that include Mrs. Nunley's property, or is that just on the-
That would be, Mr. Shacklet, the, the existing 25-foot strip of, of RS-15 would be, would basically be the eastern border of the property, south of Lee Lane. So starting at Lee Lane, the eastern border of the property. So where it says 25-foot strip to be zoned RS-15 simultaneous with annexation, that would be a 40-foot strip to be zoned RS-15 simultaneous with annexation.
So I'll make an, I'll make a motion to approve the 40-foot strip for the RS-15? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion?
With the recommended plat condition.
With the recommended plat condition.
Subject to all staff comments.
Anybody else?
The pub-
We have our public hearings closed, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Between-
The public, the public hearing is closed, so, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor?
Okay.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion, second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance.
Epstein.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll now move to a plan of services of annexations for segments of I-40, I-24, Butler Drive, Elam Road, Joby Jackson Parkway, John R. Rice Boulevard, John Bragg Highway, and Shelbyville Pike Right-of-way. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. We have an annexation plan of services brought to you tonight by the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department. As you mentioned, there are quite a few rights-of-way involved, and I'll go through all of those. First of all, just to give you some background, the fire department came to us in 2018, and really, this is something that, that has been in the works for several years. There are a number of rights-of-way, based on the annexation patterns of the city over the course of the last 10, 20, 30 years, gaps of right-of-way of major arterial roads and interstates that have been left in the county and now create confusion, or have the potential to create confusion in times of emergency. And so, the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department, as, as all of you know, is more than just a fire department, they're a rescue department. They have numerous first responders, and oftentimes, when there are emergencies, medical emergencies, our fire and rescue department is the first emergency service provider on the scene. Based on our ISO Class II rating, we have very, very rapid response times with the numerous fire, fire stations that we have located throughout the city. So with that being said, when there are accidents on these major arterial roads, these interstates, when there are medical emergencies, our fire department wants the certainty of knowing what the jurisdictions are. So really, this request is about the fire department being what's called the authority having jurisdiction on these roads, so that anywhere on these major arterial roads, there are no gaps that, that they have to wonder when there's an emergency call, is this in the county's jurisdiction or the city's jurisdiction, so that there won't be that confusion in times of emergency. So I'll go over the 10 areas, and there is an additional area that will be the subject of the next item on the agenda that we, that we picked up on after, after this particular annexation came before the Planning Commission. So the first one is essentially the I-840, I-24 interchange. It's on the map in front of you. It takes the interchange, and it also takes some of I-840 and I-24 going in three directions from that interchange. The next is the segment of Butler Drive directly adjacent to the Joby Jackson Parkway interchange. Mr. Huddleston alluded to this segment during the, during the last public hearing. The next is what Mr. Smotherman referred to in the, in the last public hearing. It's a segment of Elam Road adjacent to the existing city limits, so you have several existing city businesses in this area here that have access to Elam Road, but that right-of-way was never annexed. So we're looking at annexing that, that property. And that would also give us the intersection of Elam Road and Joby Jackson Parkway, putting that in the city limits, which was also discussed during the last public hearing. This is the segment of I-24, believe it or not, the segment of I-24 in between Medical Center Parkway and Old Fort Parkway is still in the county. That would bring this segment of I-24 into the city limits. So anytime that there would be an accident on this segment of I-24, the fire and rescue department would, it would, it would be clear that they would have jurisdiction to go respond to a call. This is the right-of-way of Joby Jackson Parkway. There are two segments of Joby Jackson Parkway. This is segment number one. This is directly to the east of Shelbyville Pike, South Church Street, and you can see it, it goes through several existing county, single-family residential areas. That's the area that the, the city recently improved several years ago. This is the second segment of Joby Jackson Parkway, basically east of the segment that I just showed you, going all the way to the interchange at Joby Jackson Parkway and I-24. Here is the actual I-24 Joby Jackson Parkway interchange, and it takes it all the way down to where the ramps begin at that interchange, south of that interchange. Next, here is a segment of John Bragg Highway, that, a very short segment of John Bragg Highway, that is just to the northeast of the Walmart at South Rutherford Boulevard. Here is a segment of John R. Rice Boulevard that is adjacent to the segment of I-24 that I previously alluded to. It is north of Gresham Lane and then south of the location of the Honda dealership. And finally, this is a segment of Shelbyville Pike that is directly adjacent to, or south of Volunteer Road, but adjacent to the southern end of the Barfield Crescent Park property. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this annexation and plan of services on October the 3rd, 2018. We initially had a public hearing scheduled before the council in November. However, we delayed that so that we could make sure that we obtained the proper consent from the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the segments of right-of-way that are, that are state highways, and also from the county road board for the segments of rights, segments of right-of-way that are currently county roads. We have done that, and so now we are moving forward since we have obtained that consent to annex. Planning Commission recommended approval of the annexation request and plan of services by a vote of six to one, and we bring this to you tonight for these 10 segments of right-of-way. Mr. Carl Pease is here tonight, if you have any questions about what this annexation request means to the Fire and Rescue Department. I'll also be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, we need to open the public hearing to consider if this plan of services an annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll now consider Resolution 18RA64 and 18RPS64 for the, let me rephrase that. Let's do 18RPS64 to adopt the plan of services first.
Before we go forward with this, could, could, could I make a suggestion that we delete John Rice Boulevard from this? And, and the reason is, going back to a few years back, John Rice Boulevard connects to a county neighborhood that was vehemently opposed to any annexation and basically said they didn't want city services, and they didn't want to pay city taxes, and they were just so vehemently opposed to it that they actually had signs out in their front yards saying, you know, "These are bad guys who are trying to annex us." I, I agree, when in doubt, put it out, as far as the fire department's concerned. If there's a fire on this roadway and there's any question whether or not it's in the city or the county, that we should put the fire out. But as far as us taking on the responsibility of maintaining that road, bringing that substandard county road up to city standards and implementing, putting sidewalks and everything else in that would probably be required if we were to ever redo that road, I just think that's one that we should probably leave out of here, so. I'm, I'm fine with the, the-
I'm fine with that.
The list, but I just, I think John Rice should be removed.
We can always come back and annex later. I mean, unless, we want to hear from, I mean, some, unless there's some really-
What does staff think?
Oppressing.
If you want to proceed that way, that needs to be made as an amendment to the resolution seconded and voted on before the, the full resolution.
Let's hear it.
Mr. Pease?
Let's see what staff says.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. From the fire and rescue standpoint of it, we're looking at it from an emergency response time. I understand that there's other expenses the city may have to incur as far as road improvements and things like that. Currently, in that section of John Rice, if there is an automobile accident on the roadway, we are the closest. We have a station on Caseon Lane, we can be there in three to four minutes or less. If that call goes to the county, and I'm not knocking the county, the county's got a great fire, great fire department, however, they will be responding from Barfield Road near Veterans Parkway.
But isn't that part of what they've elected not to pay for in their property taxes by not wanting to get annexed? They have elected not to have that service, right? I mean, the people who live there-
Yeah, I think what he's just, I think what he's, Mr. Pease is saying is if it's, if a city resident has an automobile accident-
In between.
In, in that road there-
County.
In the county section, it still wouldn't-
And we don't look at just, see, we, we look at it from any resident.
Yeah.
Any resident has a wreck right there. We want to get there, we want to help them.
Yeah.
And that's why we're asking. That one stretch could technically go to the county fire and rescue, which would delay a response when we're considerably closer.
Do we have to, do we have to build it up to standards? I mean, this wouldn't be for you, Mr. Pease, I'm sorry, but I mean, do we have to build the road? Do we have to make it come up to standards now, later? What's-
Mr. LaLance, I'd be glad to step in on that one. The, the term substandard is compared to a city standard condition. When we annex county roads that are, that are substandard, there is not a requirement that we upgrade it to city standards. What I can tell you is that we've had on the books for some time a plan to improve John Rice Boulevard, including this stretch. Obviously, those have not proceeded beyond design, but, but we, we do, from a transportation standpoint, know that that stretch is pretty critical to us, that will need to be improved at some point. The county agreed with the construction of Lane-Agri Park to cooperate with the city on funding some of those, but there is not a requirement that we upgrade it upon annexation. There would be a requirement, I think Mr. Smotherman alluded to this, that the routine operation and maintenance cost would, would then transfer to the city. Right now, that's at the county stage.
Let me, I would add too, and, and I would never disagree with Farmer or Pease, but some of the, the issues that really started the process to take these roadways has changed over the last few weeks. Our emergency management services now with the county are becoming a lot more coordinated, and it's a lot more open, a lot more shared. As a matter of fact, we are looking at how we might design a, a rate structure to be able to serve those county areas that aren't in ours, and the county residents pay for that. So I think eliminating it, you know, with the coordination, we're now getting the, putting the co-location of the emergency response things, services would, would alleviate some of this.
You want to amend it? So are we amending it, or are we including it, or what? I'm not sure.
Well, that's for-
I'll make a motion to amend it with the, the removal of John Rice Boulevard.
Second.
All right, we have an amendment, a motion, a second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. So we'll now need to look at Resolution 18RA60, excuse me, 18RPS64, adopt the plan of services as amended.
And, and I think it's advantageous- And, and I think it's advantageous maybe at this point to say that the city is working with the county to improve services so that if we do have the ability to respond quicker to a response, to a situation, that, that it can be worked out with the county to potentially recoup the cost of our response versus their response. So, I, you know, when in doubt, put it out when the fire is concerned and if there's an emergency situation and we can respond quicker. All in favor of us getting somebody there to help. But, but in, in that particular case, I think there's, there's probably some improvement that we can make to the situation. So, anyways, now I will make the motion to approve this plan of services and annexation.
As amended.
As amended.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll now need to look at a plan of services and annexation for I-24 right-of-way on, between South Church and Joby Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. The last public hearing that we have tonight is for similar reasons. It's for a segment of I-24 right-of-way in between South Church Street and Joby Jackson Parkway.
Excuse me? You just voted to adopt the plan of services. You did not-
We did make, the, the second one was to make a motion for the annexation as amended. Yeah, we voted on the amendment.
We never did, we never did the plan of services then.
You amended the plan of service.
You amended the plan of services.
All right, thank you. All right, we need Resolution 18RA64 to adopt an annexation as, we'll need to get an amendment on that one as well.
Move for approval with the amendment.
We got to have the amendment.
We got to have an amendment on the annexation and then-
We're amending the annexation.
Just restate your amendment.
Let's, let's amend again. So, so, so we're going to remove John Rice Boulevard from this plan of services.
Annexation.
Annexation.
Annexation. Have a motion?
Second.
Second. So, this is for removal of John, John Rice. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll now need to get a motion for 18RA64 to adopt the annexation as amended.
Move for approval as amended.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
You're welcome.
All right, now we'll need to consider plan of services and annexation for I-24 right-of-way between South Church Street, Joby Jackson. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Our last public hearing tonight is for the segment colored in blue on the map before you. It's, runs east of the South Church Street interchange, exit 81, east of the CSX railroad tracks and south to the Joby Jackson Parkway interchange. It's actually directly adjacent to the area off of Lee Lane that we considered for annexation and zoning earlier in the evening. This is for the exact same reason as the previous annexation request by the fire department. This is also brought to you by the fire department to make them the authority having jurisdiction over this segment of I-24. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter and unanimously recommended approval. Be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on the plan of services. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider Resolution 19RPS07 to adopt the plan of services.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll now need to consider Resolution 19RA807 to also adopt, it says plan of services, but I seen this is for the annexation.
Yes, I would say so.
Yes. All right, so let's make sure we note on our agenda that 19RA07 is to adopt the annexation, not the plan of services.
So moved.
Move for, and, and second for annexation.
All right, motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Do we have any beer permits?
No, sir.
All right. We've got, need to add one item under appointment to the ARC Commission. Mr. Shacklet, Mr.?
Charlie Parker.
Charlie Parker. His application is in the, in the office, but he served on the senior citizens center for years, but we want to add him as well to the Murfreesboro ARC Committee and would like to have that go in companion with also Ms. Ginny Togra. So, if we could get a motion for reappointments to the library, library board, the Stone River, the Stones River Regional Library Board and to the Murfreesboro ARC Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I had to do that one time. All those opposed? All right. Any statements to be paid? All right. Any other business?
This weekend is, hopefully, Main Street has our Jazz Fest this weekend, so I'd encourage everyone to come out and support Main Street and our downtown with Jazz Fest this weekend.
And the month of May is National Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month and anybody who drives a car around Murfreesboro, please be careful with your cell phones because there's guys out there on two wheels and ladies out there on two wheels that would appreciate your observing the laws of the length of roads. So, that, please, please be cautious and be aware and keep your eyes open for those motorcycles.
Mr. Kendall, how are we looking on our schedule? We've, will we, are you anticipating us meeting the 9th?
No. I anticipate workshop on the 8th.
Okay.
And finalize all of our budget activity that we need to do, have the departments give a brief over, or the executive directors give a brief overview for the departments to the council. And then, then we'll meet the, not the next Thursday, the next day, but the week from that Thursday. So, that'd be the, what, the 16th?
Where are we going to meet on?
Police, police department.
Police department?
Police headquarters.
Okay.
Community.
Would you mind if we, would it be possible if, I don't know if it's too, too late to advertise, but could we do a 10:30 on the, on the 8th? Would that be possible? Only reason I ask, the Salvation Army has their, has their big luncheon that day at, at 12. So, if we did maybe 10:30 to 12?
We'll get it to the paper tomorrow, but it won't come out until Tuesday, which is the day before the meeting. Is that enough time?
All right, sounds like we're going to be meeting at 11.
Yeah.
Yep.
11:30 is what's happening.
We'll get it on the website. We'll get, in social media, Mr. Brandling, I'll get it out. It's just a change of time.
I mean, I'm just asking for, if we could do-
Good with it if it, if it could work legally. I mean, I don't-
The Open Meetings Act does not have a, a definite statement as in terms of you must provide X number of days. It's supposed to be reasonable. We're, we're moving, we're moving promptly on it. It's being announced here at a public meeting.
Okay.
I'm, I'm comfortable with it so long as it gets out and is advertised in the next paper.
And we'll use our other media channels.
Yeah.
So, 10:30 on, on Wednesday.
And say the 8th, okay. All right. Perfect. Thank you all for doing that. 10:30. Okay. All right, any other business?
Not here.
All right, seeing none, we'll stand and adjourn.